Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council and Housing Authority will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shinier.
Here.
Councilmember Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Present.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie. The council member is online. Mayor Steinberg, thank you.
Mayor Steinberg is here. Good afternoon to everyone. Let us please rise all who can. I'd ask Councilmember Katie Valenzuela to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Sure, please stand. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all someday.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Valenzuela. Members, I have on my Zoom here a small lit candle. At 2:30 today, West Coast time, 5:30 East Coast time, President-elect Biden and Vice President-elect Kamala Harris will lead a commemoration at the Lincoln Memorial in memory of the 400,000-plus Americans, including too many Sacramentoans who have died of COVID-19. And so we light this candle, and those of you who can urge you to do so as well in solidarity with their families, with their communities, and in memory of real lives lost due to this terrible, terrible pandemic. May tomorrow be what it will be, a new day and a fresh start for our country, first and foremost, in ending this terrible chapter of our recent history. I also want to say at the very beginning of this meeting that our hearts go out to the family of the slain Deputy Sheriff. We've all read about that terrible incident at Cal Expo last night and behalf of the entire city. Our thoughts, our prayers, our sorrow goes out to the family and the men and women who serve. Members, we have two public hearings today. The first is the emergency ordinance establishing a so-called Safe Ground - Safe Ground approval throughout our city, something that we have talked a lot about. I have submitted for your consideration, and because of the Brown Act and the agendizing and all that, I would ask for your consideration for my portion of the ordinance today, but a formal vote next Tuesday. And after the staff presents on the body of the original ordinance, I will then explain why I have brought forward an additional motion for you to consider. With that, City Manager, who is presenting on this item? Is this Tom Pace, I assume, right?
Good evening, good afternoon, Mayor.
Okay. Our acting planning director, Mr. Sandlin, welcome.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll just get this presentation up. Okay, so today, staff is requesting the City Council adopt an interim emergency ordinance called the Small Temporary Residential Shelters and Temporary Shelter Facilities Ordinance. On January 14th, 2020, the City Council declared a shelter crisis and directed the City Manager to take action to streamline the provision of homeless shelters. The shelter crisis was recently renewed for an additional year on January 12th. On May 22nd, 2020, Sacramento County Health Officer directed local governments to refrain from siting, clearing, or relocating homeless encampments to slow the spread of COVID-19. On July 16th last year, Sacramento Superior Court issued a writ of mandate directing the city to refrain from clearing homeless individuals and encampments and comply with the Sacramento County Health Officer's order. On September 25th, 2020, the Governor signed Assembly Bill 2553 that expanded the shelter crisis law, giving cities and counties the ability to provide more homeless shelter options. And most recently, on January 5th, the City Council committed to a six-month tentative schedule and work program to prepare a master siting operations programmatic and financing plan to address homelessness in the city of Sacramento. In response, the city has prepared a draft ordinance for the council's consideration this afternoon that will provide an alternative to the illegal campgrounds being established in the city. This ordinance helps to provide a streamlined planning and building review process to help implement the five-point plan that is going to be discussed in the next item this afternoon. The proposed ordinance is an interim emergency ordinance. It is not a permanent change to our code. It would allow an administrative permit only during the declared shelter crisis. It would permit temporary shelters and facilities of 24 individuals or fewer. And this would include campgrounds, parked trailers, emergency sleeping cabins, or safe parking lots. We have some minimal standards to ensure safety and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. We have setbacks from surrounding properties, paving requirements, require potable water, hours of operation, and quiet hours. We'd also require that onsite manager, it could be a resident, be onsite. We require lighting as well as secure personal storage. We also have some building standards such as toilets and bathing facilities. We would require garbage, waste, and rubbish disposal, accessible paths of travel, and then we'd have some specific standards for emergency sleeping cabins and tents. The ordinance does not require many operational standards. However, we do recommend that the shelter providers follow the recommendations of Sacramento County's Emergency Shelter Standards about operation staffing, their providing food, facilities, and support services. As for where these shelters would be located, they could be located on any assembly site, such as a church, temple, in any zone, or on sites in commercial and industrial zones, both if they are 500 feet away from sensitive uses, such as another shelter facility, K-12 school, childcare center, family daycare, museum, or park. Additionally, they would have to be a half-mile from an existing temporary residential shelter. As for outreach to business districts, some of the issues that were raised are how are the permits revoked or enforced? What are some security considerations we've made? What are the services for the people staying at the facility? What are being considered for loitering and camping outside the site? Impacts to surrounding businesses, noticing the surrounding properties, and any time limits for shelters? When we reached out to homeless service providers and advocates, there's been much interest in the city paying for these facilities, providing subsidies. We want to know the background or experience required for a shelter operation. What are the conditions again for revoking a permit? If the city would indemnify the property owners, either fire safety standards? What are some check-in procedures? We've addressed many of these questions in attachment to the 10 of the staff report. And on September 29th, the Law and Legislation Committee provided additional directions on the ordinance, expanding the radius from sensitive uses from 300 to 500 feet, including a museum as a sensitive use, as well as requiring a half-mile buffer from existing temporary residential shelters. They also had various questions and wanted additional information, and that was provided in attachment nine of the report. Lastly, there's been questions about whether we can do an annual report to the council on how this program is going, and our recommendation is we would do this annually when council considers extending the emergency shelter crisis. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And also with me is Tom Pace, Director of Community Development, as well as Bridget Dean with the Office of Community Response.
Mr. Sandlin, thank you very much. You and Mr. Pace and your entire team, I think, have worked extraordinarily hard and effectively in bringing this forward. I want to make my very brief presentation, and then I'll hand it over to council members for questions, because there is an addendum to the resolution, which, as I said earlier, we distributed through the City Clerk to you around 1 o'clock. The ordinance that is before us today, in my view, is vital, but it is not nearly enough. The master plan that the council approved the process for two weeks ago is essential, but it is not nearly enough. For, we must act now, and frankly, more effectively, to actually build and implement and raise from the ground the shelters, the tiny homes, the safe parking lots, all of the options we have been talking about for months and years faster than we complete the master plan. And if we are honest with ourselves about our own performance as a city, and I know some of you, three of you are new, so maybe you don't bear all of this, but if we're honest about it, I believe we would say, I would say, that we have laudably leaned into the issue of homelessness over these past years. We have been willing to put real resources behind our commitment. We have actually laid out a series of strategies which have the potential to be effective in bringing more people indoors, but we have not implemented nearly fast enough the solutions that we all know would bring relief to hundreds and thousands and also bring relief to our businesses and our residents at the same time. It's about implementation. The city needs to be more nimble, and that's all of us. It's not just the staff. It's also us as elected officials who want to do the right thing, but also get that inevitable pushback from people and from our neighborhoods. It is about the city culture, in my view. It has a long checklist of sometimes legitimate, but sometimes not compelling reasons why we can't move faster or why we can't do it at all. I know we've had great debates in this community over the past year about the form of government, and I'm all over that, by the way. The voters spoke very clearly. But I also know that as policymakers, it is not enough for us anymore to merely set the general policy and then expect and hope that it's just going to get done. That we have a responsibility to write at least some of the software, to write some of the implementation instructions, certainly what we expect in terms of timelines or performance, because the city staff has told me very clearly that when we don't do that, they sometimes don't know what is a higher priority than something else. Well, I know you are tired of, and I am tired of, and I know the city team is tired of always being on the defensive around what we are doing about these existing encampments and the controversies that seem to arise every week about the encampments. There is only one real answer to that, in my view, and that is to be much more proactive on the implementation side, to actually get the products up so that we can move people from where they shouldn't be, to provide them opportunity to where they should and can be, to live more safely and with greater dignity. And so my motion, which, again, we cannot vote on tonight, but I would certainly like your feedback, is to direct the city team to do several things. Number one, to purchase at least 30 of these tiny homes, 33 of them actually, eight which are already in storage, so an additional 25 within 30 days, slightly modified from my press release a week ago. 33 in total within 30 days, and to make those tiny homes operable within 30 days. Secondly, let me get the exact motion here so that I get it correctly. That the City Manager be authorized to procure an additional 30 tiny homes or other efficiency housing products to deploy within 50 days from the date of this resolution, i.e. another 20 days after the 30 days, to get us to 60, to get us to 63 actually, 63 tiny homes. Now, Section 6 may be the most important section of the entire resolution and maybe the most important policy statement we can make about this vexing issue in any resolution that we put forward. And Howard and I worked on this together. Meeting the timelines described in Sections 4 and 5, the timelines I just laid out, will depend on maximum cooperation between council members, city and SHRA staff, and the community. In other words, how are we going to actually cite within 30 days and then 20 days after that? The only way we're going to do it is by members stepping forward and saying, "I have this site, Howard and his team will procure the product, we'll work with the community, and we'll get people indoors." Now, some of you have already publicly actually stepped up and said just that, and I appreciate it, but I want to tell you that I might become unpopular among many of you because I'm going to be real pushy here. And I'm going to continue to write the software here with your help, and the software is going to be around timelines and implementation. We have got to exercise this muscle that is represented by this addendum to this resolution. As you know the truth, if all we did was pass Tom Pace and Greg Sutland's aspirational ordinance today, and it is an aspirational ordinance, without this addendum, we'll be talking about the same thing four months from now and five and six months from now, and I'm tired of it. I'm tired of being on the defensive on your behalf. We should be on the offense, and the only way to be on the offense is to actually insist on building product and bringing people indoors. So I ask for your consideration of both the ordinance, which I think is aspirational and the right thing to do. Congratulations to the city team. But the first of many implementation instructions in collaboration with Howard and his team, by the way, no jams. We're not saying you do this or else. That's exactly why Section 6 is in the resolution. This depends on maximum cooperation, I mean, yes, the city team, if I'm right, us as elected officials, and the community. Some in the community are going to say, "No, no, not here." We're going to say yes more than we're saying no, and I thank you for your consideration. Let me turn it over to members, and we'll take public testimony. How much public testimony do we have, Madam Clerk?
So far, I have nine callers on hold.
Okay, why don't we hear from the public, and then we'll turn it to the City Council? Thank you.
Thank you, may I have my first caller, please? May we have the first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Please turn down the device. You're watching the meeting and speaking to your phone. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. This is Mike Jaski, representing Sacramento Act. We submitted a formal letter to you via email and through ecomments. We support the proposed ordinance with amendments. We have identified four problems, and we have suggestions for solving each of them. The first problem, the master siting, operating, programming, and financing plan not linked to the ordinance. It gives the impression there's no financial support if you read the ordinance by itself. Insert a new paragraph in the background and make that clear. Problem two, despite the disclaimer on page four, it appears that all the safety and operational standards outlined in great detail are applicable to all facilities. We need to add a new section to the ordinance that spells out that there's an application for a permit, certain information is required from the proposed operator, and this is the basis for financial compensation would be different for each facility. Problem three, the permits for temporary shelters are valid only during the period that the city shelter crisis declaration is in effect. This creates an untenable issue for shelter operators. You need to figure out a way to link the termination of the shelter crisis declaration with phase-out of these facilities. There are multiple ways to do this. We propose two steps. First Steps Communities proposed a different one. Pick one. Finally, safety, operational, and support service requirements are not differentiated to accommodate differences in expected outcomes for residents. The mayor opened this discussion today by referring to Safe Ground. Safe Ground residents don't want all of the services that are required. Need to differentiate the requirements somewhat to accommodate people with different expectations. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Great, thank you. Mayor, councilmember, City Manager, good afternoon, everybody. Michael Alp with the Downtown Partnership. Appreciate an opportunity to speak on this today. Clearly for us, ending homelessness needs to be a priority for Sacramento. I think you understand downtown, there's no question that new approaches need to be explored to bring the most vulnerable off the streets and indoors. We feel this ordinance, when tied with services, has the potential to create new opportunities to coordinate and address the issues of homelessness in our community. We know firsthand shelters need to be short-term, and that's what they were intended to do. We must continue to emphasize transitioning clients into permanent housing. I think, as we've reiterated to you many times in our discussions, it's critical that these shelters include wraparound services and resources to move individuals into more sustainable housing. In the case of temporary shelters, much of the existing city code really is designed to protect the most utilized and sensitive locations. As you've discussed already, this includes parks, museums, and more, but we encourage you to maintain the 500-feet usage from very sensitive uses and strongly support establishing a half-mile minimum distance from existing temporary shelters, including sites like Project Room Key. We think this is a critical measure to prevent overconcentration in any one neighborhood, and we cannot stress enough how critical shelter standards are in any siting plan. We've seen that firsthand downtown, how critical that is to the success of any shelter. This is for residents and the neighbors. The priority placement should occur for individuals currently residing in adjacent neighborhoods. And I think, as we've communicated to you repeatedly, we want to be part of this solution with you. We want to work with you as you look at potential sites, operations, and programming, and really do appreciate the leadership on what we know is a really challenging issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Daphne Harris. I'm in District 8. I just wanted to basically appreciate Mayor's passionate plea for services. However, I would like for you to define emergency shelters, what that entails. I would also like for you to develop a relationship with the county and state to get the funding necessary in order to do this appropriately. I would also like to have you look into the role of the housing community development. I'd like to know what that is and how that's defined. I'd also like to understand how the Steinberg Institute is actually being a member of making the solution happen. I'd also like for you to look into developing more relationships with the counties and using the services that are already there and leveraging off of them instead of creating new ones. The other thing I'd like for you to do as well is to work with the state and county to get the appropriate land resources allocated to the issue, which we've already pointed out to you, there are already two land spaces that are available. Instead of putting them into communities, you can put them into the county. Land is already available, and individuals are already trying to allow you to use that land, but you're refusing to do so because it's in a county location as opposed to a city location. The other thing, we asked for those parcels back in December of last year, and we were told by a public comment that those parcels were not available. Now, all of a sudden, 1,700 minutes' parcels are available, and still, the public has not been given a list of those permits so we can give your input. You are not coming to the public when we try to do a solution. That's why you're getting stonewalled, and you're not being a corporate citizen and working with the residents. So I don't appreciate you trying to bully the council into something that is not viable, and I would like for you to do a little bit more research before you try to push your feelings across to us, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Robert Cooper. I live in District 4. I've got a few problems with this plan. Since this is only for when the shelter crisis is involved, what are the determinations when you're going to cancel a shelter crisis? Another reason, stop the sweeps, it's spreading COVID-19.
Thank you.
A few other, 24 people per site? That is ridiculous. Some sites can do more than 24, and put it all neighborhoods. And we've been coming to City Council just before Mayor Steinberg was mayor, and we haven't seen nothing done about it.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, hello, my name is Ben Flahodnik. I'm a medical student working with Sacramento Street Medicine, and I'm calling in today to urge the City Council to stop police sweeps and encampment clearance. I like to briefly describe why these sweeps are extremely uprooting for people. Imagine living in your home for years, potentially, and then the police seemingly come out of nowhere and tell you that you can't live there anymore. Now imagine a community of these people residing in their homes where they cook their food, park their cars, and enjoy the evenings with their neighbors, and to just have all of that ripped away, that's incredibly uprooting. And aside from the obvious trauma that people can experience as a result of these sweeps, this has incredible consequences to these people's well-being, especially during COVID-19. Leaving their home means their physical safety is compromised. The stresses of living outside can have an immense toll on their mental health, their meds being thrown away by the police, their doctors not being able to find them as a result. The lack of care for these people is frankly appalling. And so I call on the City Council to stop camp sweeps immediately as they are fueling this And so I call on the City Council to stop camp sweeps immediately as they are fueling this public health crisis. And to allow for organized encampments free of police sweeps and violence. And lastly, to simply include these people and their concerns and decisions that directly affected them. If someone was going to come to you, to your home and try and kick you out, wouldn't you want to have a say in the matter? And don't these people deserve the same? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, PJ from District Four. I support this ordinance. I am tired of seeing every belonging in an unhoused residence life being quote unquote cleaned up by Forensic Clean or other contractors, which actually means just throwing them all away as though there isn't value to them in the eyes of the unhoused person. Often using these items that are others see as a tritus for maintaining a bare level of existence during times when the city fails to support them in a meaningful way, ensuring that they can have some hope of reentering society. And that's not even taking into account the reality of the unprecedented times we are living through, where even less has been done. And the halving away of their items and the dispersal of their micro-communities is resulting in potential spread of COVID to surrounding housed and unhoused neighborhoods. This isn't moral, this isn't ethical, this isn't us. This is those in power choosing to disperse them for whatever reason they may think makes it moral in some far-fetched plan. But it isn't, it needs to stop. It needs to stop until COVID is done. Cleaning is fine, providing trash cans and existent facilities such as showers, laundry and bathrooms are fine. All of these can work to ensure safety between the communities of unhoused and housed neighbors without destroying unhoused neighbors' ability to exist in the name of quote unquote unsightliness at the potential cost of their lives. This is a good interim step to create more temporary housing for our unhoused neighbors. This needs to start immediately. I wouldn't be surprised if a large number of activists would be more than willing to volunteer to get it on its feet even quicker to ensure our unhoused neighbors don't have to worry about city workers and city contractors at the command of their leaders destroy their belongings. I appreciate the mayor's posturing while he has shown a lack of leadership over the past eight years. I truly hope that this time he means it, that this time the grandstanding has followed through. Truly, I want him to succeed by ensuring the success of those of us actually advocating for the unhoused. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, this is Ronnie with Old North Sacramento Community Association in District Two. We oppose this ordinance for District Two completely. We've been struggling with almost a decade of lack of care standards and oversight in our district. We have more empty lots, underfunded churches and community service providers that have been struggling with the overconcentration and impacts of transit activity more than the rest of the city. Putting any new temporary shelters in our district will be the final burden that will hedge more decay, disinvestment of businesses, you know, and hinder proper development. The lack of standards for all the existing issues, they'll just compound to make the unhoused people prime for unsafe and unhealthy conditions, which will possibly even exacerbate the mental health and substance abuse issues they need help with. So the most humane solution is to completely exempt District Two from this ordinance and that's what I'm hoping you guys can come up with today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, this is Teresa McConnell of District Two. I oppose this specifically in District Two, but I oppose the general ordinance overall. This is just another temporary shelter solution that is lacking the long-term solutions that our homeless community needs. The majority of the people homeless right now are temporary homeless. Just giving them a shelter over their head temporarily is not a solution. This is, this is just another just postponement. And basically it's helping accelerate our homeless problem because it's not doing anything. And the longer people stay out on the street, if they're temporary homeless, the more likely they are to be involved in drugs or other things due to, due to just the sheer situation that they're in. Long-term solutions with the collaborative effort of the county, possibly the state, needs to be addressed here. This is just another Band-Aid. It's good for a, you know, photo op, a headline. This is not an actual solution for our homeless population, which is growing by the day. Popping up shelters throughout the neighborhoods, whoever wants them with no resources at the hands of the people that need it, is not a solution. It is just perpetuating the problem. I really strongly, please, please readdress this and join forces with the county, work back with them, join these resources and work together to find long-term solutions. Cal Expo, work with the state, do something that actually is going to be meaningful and helpful for our homeless community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you very much. Hi, my name is Nick Balter and I'm a medical student working with Sacramento Street Medicine as well. So I've been going out to these unhoused camps for a while and I've seen the effects of the street sweeps that have been happening recently. And I would like to say I think a lot of good points have been made today about how to address these issues. But on a personal note, I think I need to urge just how important it is that these problems are addressed immediately. One of the first times I went out to one of these camps, I saw a man sleeping in only a sweatshirt and his backpack over him because he wasn't able to bring any shelter with him and he had no way to protect himself from the cold. It's obviously getting really cold during winter right now and something needs to be done right now about this issue. I think the plans look like there's actually ways to help these people, but we really need to make sure that this issue is addressed immediately. And the street sweeps are not helping, they're just taking the shelter away from these people that can keep them warm through the winter. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, I can't hear you very well.
You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, District Eight, my name is Rose Myers and I have one point on the overall proposal that I would like to see changed. I would like to see more than 500 feet in proximity to K-12 and childcare centers. It's too close. We need to have more than 500 feet, preferably a quarter to a half mile. And point two on the proposal, we here in District Eight Meadowview, we have a shelter that was negotiated without 100% support. Now we have tiny homes. It has come to my attention that those tiny homes could possibly be put in a property that is less than 500 feet from a school and maybe 500 or 1,000 feet from a current shelter. So I'm having some anxiety around this because I don't think it will be negotiated in good faith. This proposal for the tiny houses is new information. And there have been some negotiations going on to put housing on five acres of property that's already adjacent and abutted to K through two elementary school and across the street from a very new temporary housing or shelters, temporary shelters. Thank you very much and I appreciate this opportunity to comment.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
There's still a person speaking.
Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name's Bob Olinbusch, I'm the Executive Director of the Sacramento Regional Coalition to End Homelessness and a resident of Councilmember Jennings District. I want to make two points. Mayor, I appreciate and City Councilmembers your sense of urgency and support, support this effort with, with the major, with major problem. The bottom line is that the staff ordinance, the way that it's drafted, does make requirements for lighting, water, garbage disposal, et cetera. Where is that money going to come from? The city needs to provide structure, the infrastructure and support this effort. And number two, in terms of the police, the continued police sweep, I would suggest that the city do, immediately do an audit of what it's costing to do these police sweeps and ultimately reprogram those costs to support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, Mayor, Members of the Council, Josh Paney, District Three, hope you guys are doing well. I wanted to just bring something to your attention that I've been watching a lot of the, your meetings, the county meetings. And one thing that is missing and I think would help is for everyone to acknowledge what is euphemistically called the service resistant population that we see on a daily basis. And the fact that that service resistant population is not going to come off the street. And that's what we all see most often. And so you, you will do these cottages, I hope, and you will do more. And I appreciate all of you and all the work you've done. Americans probably remember when we started working on the Quinn cottages back when I was on council with him many years ago. And then they were ultimately finished after I got off council in 1998. But if we don't look at the, the issue of the state law and that these euphemistically called service resistant folks are not coming off the street and we have to do something with the state law. And that's something I, I urge all of you to look at. I'm certainly looking at it and helping in the legislative side. And if we don't do that, we will continue to frustrate all of the population because that's what we're seeing.
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comment, please?
Okay, so thank you, Mayor, for all of your work, thank you, Council, and I hope that you'll focus on that issue as well. Bye-bye.
Thank you, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Lorette Tamola. I wanted to say to Mayor Steinberg, you are to be commended on your call for immediate action. However, it's not enough. In the next 30 days, I agree that we do need immediate action, but we need to stop the sweeps. And the, unfortunately, the... Hi, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with the delay. Anyway, we need to immediately stop the sweeps and I ask that you amend the proposal, make the safe ground restrictions recommendations, instead of making them a huge difficult to implement list of restrictions that have the effect of being a deterrent to action and illegal justification for the sweeps. I ask that you make an ordinance to prevent the sweeps. I ask that you remove those restrictions and that you continue to push for more safe ground parking lots, more tiny homes in immediate fast timelines like, like Mayor Steinberg was talking about. And I ask that you treat the citizens of Sacramento, whether they are housed or unhoused, dignity instead of picking up their belongings unceremoniously with huge tractors and abusing them out of the city. It's not going to work, we've got a huge humanitarian crisis. We need to be more compassionate, we need to treat these people like human beings. We need to provide them a place to live and not lists of restrictions that make it so that, that that is impossible to implement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Can I go ahead?
Yes, please.
Hello and good afternoon, this is Steve Waters from First Step Communities. I did want to leave a few comments with you today, I appreciate the opportunity. I sent a letter to the mayor and the City Councilmembers, I hope you received it. It reflects our position on the proposed ordinance as well as the master plan, which we see obviously is very tied together and presents a cost model for some of the options that we thought about and wanted to share with you. So we tried to lay those out in that letter. I'm not going to repeat all of them, it's a long letter. Obviously, one of the things that we drew attention to was the fact that providing services adds costs, but there's some optional ways of providing those services, perhaps from a centralized facility as opposed to onsite. And we've detailed that out a bit. We also want to draw your attention to different needs for different populations of the homeless community. We think that there's a place where self-governed smaller sites may be necessary, but we think that the service dependent sites may well, do well, would be more cost effective with some higher populations. And so we tried to draw that to your attention in, in our letter. Also, we'd like to mention that when it comes to distance from other services, we want to make sure we don't, in trying to protect certain sites, we don't shoot ourselves in the foot by putting ourselves too far away from, from some facilities that it might be advantageous to be close to. For one thing, we always list that, that we always see the list say that our encampments or communities should not be close to schools and yet homeless people have...
Thank you for your comments, your time is complete, will you make your final comments, please?
Yeah, my final comment is that if I didn't get that letter to anyone, I'd be happy to resend it. And finally, last sentence, I think it's important that all districts look at participating. I heard several callers...
Thank you for your comments.
...that districts eliminated, I think there's a way for all districts to play a role in this.
Thank you for your comments.
Steve Waters has been a real leader here, that's exactly the idea here. Before I turn it over to members, that's our public testimony. I think it's appropriate that we ask Bridget Dean, who is our new director, interim director, I guess whatever the title is, but definitely in charge of the Office of Community Response, to address this, some of the concerns and criticisms that have been raised by some members of the public. Go ahead, Bridget.
Thanks, Mayor, hello, everybody. I, I take a lot of these comments obviously into consideration, but also to heart. And so I just want to touch base on a couple of things that will be coming up on our end. I am Bridget Dean, the interim director of the Office of Community Response. And as many of you on this call know in the community, that we are changing the way we will be responding to homelessness in the city of Sacramento and that we'll be using teams from the Office of Community Response to make those first contacts and second contacts. And I think it's important when we're talking about certain wording that when we use the word sweep, I don't, you know, the sweep model is an extreme and can be a very harsh experience and I fully understand that. I want to clarify to everybody here today that I've been doing this work for 30 years. I've been an advocate in the... I've been an advocate in the work I've done, and I am a formerly lived experience homeless person. So I take it to heart when we're talking about people experiencing homelessness, who are having items taken or camps removed. But I think it's also important to stress that the goal of the cleanup model that has been here in Sacramento is to really better some of those encampment conditions. And I just want to stress the sweep model, the word sweep. I don't believe that Sacramento PD is doing sweeps, per se, where they're just clearing entire camps without any notification or otherwise. Having said that, do I think we can do it better? Absolutely. And that is the goal that we are working towards, to change some of those process. The other thing I want to share, Mayor, is that next week I'll be at the council meeting to review some of the process that we currently use, how we're notified of areas that people have concern of in our community through 311 and other calls for service. Additionally, I'll touch on the Alhambra location, which I know for many people has been a concern, and we'll be covering all of those areas. So we are changing the model here, and we will be moving forward. And I do want you to know as advocacy, I do want to work with you, and I want to bring you to the table with us so we can change the model and keep working towards that. But we really need the help. If you're out in the encampments, reach out to me. Let me know that. How do we work with you to assist us in those contacts and other things that we need to do to better better the condition for those experiencing homelessness?
So Bridget, from your from your perspective and experience, can you describe what others are describing as sweeps? What actually happens? And what is the process? And what are the circumstance that as you as you see it and as you describe it?
Well, I think in the harshest sense, a sweep is literally, and it has happened in many communities and to many homeless encampments, where law enforcement would come in and completely just clear an area without any notice and remove everything and move people on. Typically, so typically what happens is we get a notification of an encampment in the city that is other through 311, or a lot of calls go through our 911 dispatch at about 4,000 a month, asking for an encampment to be moved, or that it's causing blockage to an area or a street. And then law enforcement and social work services will go out and ask people to move back from the sidewalk or clear the area so it can be have access for individuals. And then they will post, and I think for some people, the posting is very much what can be concerning for them, and they call that the sweep or refer to it as the sweep. And it gives them a time period to clear that area. So that is what we typically do. Forensic Clean is a small business owner with lived experience employees who do the work. And I do want to stress, I think we have to be clear, that they are going as a contract vendor with the city of Sacramento. And when I hear them associated with sweeps, that does concern me. So that's what we do, Mayor. And one of the biggest changes we're going to be making, actually, we started this week in the downtown and River District area, is a first OCR outreach team that's doing all of those contacts through 311, and there are no police making those contacts. So we're moving there.
Members, we will have an opportunity to reengage with Bridget Dean on this next week, as she said, as she presents on the Office of Community Response. I don't want this to digress too much into a debate or an issue over sweeps, because we have the ordinance and the mayor's addendum to the ordinance as well. So I want to make sure that we don't lose the focus on the on what's before us today. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Valensway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Bridget, for your willingness to continue that conversation with the advocates. I think I'm hopeful for where we can go from here and the work that you're hopefully teeing up in the city. I do want to just note, starting off with, you know, the urgent situation in my district, since that's obviously where my expertise lies. One example being, we have several encampments under the WX freeway that are going to be moved when Caltrans starts construction very soon. You've seen the cones there for the bat, you know, bat habitats and stuff they created to try to like move, you know, wildlife out of the area, and we have no place for those folks to go. And I'm really concerned about how tensions will escalate when folks who are unhoused end up in neighborhoods, end up in business districts, searching for a place to be. And so for me, some of the urgency that I feel to identify sites in District Four is really with that in mind, in addition to some key encampments that Bridget knows about, that we're really trying to stabilize quickly, recognizing that it's going to take us a bit to manifest these long term solutions that we're all really committed to figuring out. So I'm very interested in that continued conversation. Next week, I got a couple of messages from folks asking where the addendum is, and just to reiterate what the mayor said, it's not posted publicly yet, we'll be voting on it next week, but very interested in figuring out if we can make use of some of those cabins in District Four. So thank the city manager, thank the mayor's staff for bringing, trying to help figure this out, and so we can see if we can get that done. I do also want to thank like the staff for all the work on this, because a lot of the concerns that I had heard expressed from the community were already in the ordinance. And so I just want to take a moment to recognize Tom and Greg and your teams for the work you put into this. It's a very thorough document, and I really appreciate that. The D4 homelessness task force has been doing a lot of really quick work. We actually put out a survey in the community and got over 90 responses in about a week with folks who had ideas for sites, ideas, concerns for the ordinance, things they wanted to make sure get realized. And I think the overall tone is that, you know, doing nothing obviously isn't an option. Because right now, what we have are what I'll call like unpermitted camping sites, right? Where unhoused folks are seeking shelter in places that isn't always great for them. It's not always great for the neighboring community. And so like, we have to figure out a way, a place for folks to be while we try to figure all of this out. And as a caveat, because I do have some proposed amendments I want to suggest today, I just want to say that I don't think we have to worry about sites springing up in our communities tomorrow when we pass this ordinance. This is a really hard thing to set up, not only because a lot of the parcels that are identified are privately owned, there's going to have to be an agreement reached, there's going to have to be discussions and arrangements set up, and like was mentioned, infrastructure, staffing, bathrooms, things that are going to be really hard to organize. So I think we can all expect that any site in our district that gets identified is going to need our engagement and the city's engagement to try to figure out how to make that work. So I want to start by saying, I think there's some concern that once we pass this ordinance, we're going to start seeing, you know, encampments springing up and throughout our community. And I really don't think that's the case, despite how urgently we need it. This is going to be a very parcel by parcel approach we're going to have to take as quickly as we can to figure out spots that are going to make the most sense for the landowners, for the neighbors, for the unhoused individuals we're trying to help. But to that end, I do have a few amendments I want to suggest specifically, again, looking from the perspective of my district, and I'm looking forward to the discussion with my colleagues today. I do want to talk about what it would look like to change the setback distance from 500 feet to 300 feet. And I know that makes folks anxious, and we heard that from some of the calls, but my perspective is when we go from 300 to 500, we actually eliminate most of the parcels that could be used in D4. So like, there's sort of an operationalizing challenge with us, where it's like, we say 500 feet, most of these parking lots and stuff that get identified that we want to try to figure out suddenly are ineligible because they're too close to different uses. So I do want to talk about that today. I also want to talk about removing the museum restriction. Again, not trying to downplay the important role that museums play in our community today. But again, this is going to eliminate some potential parcels that we're looking at in the district that I'm hoping to figure out, not just the auto museum, but maybe some other parcels that I'd really like to keep on the table as we try to negotiate with landowners to make encampments happen. I'd also like to echo, some advocates have reached out talking about some sort of wind down period after the shelter crisis is over. Right now, the ordinance would basically expire the minute we take that vote at a Tuesday meeting, and I think we need maybe a few weeks or a couple months where folks can wind down those sites to make sure that the folks who are staying there do transition into hopefully all of the amazing permanent solutions that we've been able to make work that would predicate the end of a shelter crisis as defined. And then final, well, not final, another big change that I want to propose is instead of saying 24 person, I think would be better if we thought about like as person per square foot ratio, because some sites are small, and that's already in the ordinance, right? If you can't provide certain setback, you wouldn't be able to have 24 folks. But other sites might be bigger. And wouldn't it be great if, you know, if we found a site that could fit 30 folks safely? If we had some sort of ratio that we could work with rather than just saying 24? Because 24 is a little arbitrary from my perspective, and I think a person per square foot or something like that. And maybe we could cap it somewhere so that folks don't feel like sites get too big, that they're unmanageable. But per what Steve and others said, especially for the service intense site, we need substance abuse treatment, we need mental health treatment, maybe having them be a little bit bigger would justify the cost of those services we're going to want to bring in. And then finally, with regard to the ordinance language, there's a couple of like little rocks, I call them like things like requiring that the parking lots be paved, you know, trying to weigh out if that's super necessary, or if we could maybe shift that down. Some of the flexibility and service models, like the language says they want to discourage folks from accepting donated food, for instance, right? And the mutual aid networks through Sex Soup and others have been delivering fully cooked meals to encampments for a while. So can we be a little nimble in service provision and food provision so that we could try to make this work? But the final thing I'll say before I stop talking, because I just dumped a lot on you all for discussion, is talking about the resources, talking about what the city could potentially do to try to make this work, because it is a lot to expect that service providers or private lot owners are going to be like, yeah, sure, use my lot, no compensation, put a bathroom on it, let people camp on it. I think we need to talk about maybe a pot of money, maybe we start with something like $250,000, where we could just see how far it goes. It might only be a few thousand a lot that we need, maybe it's more. But how can we offer up some resources and maybe some parameters for how those resources could be used so that we could try to make this actually work? So that, as the mayor said, we're not just talking about this again in a few months when those sites have have materialized. So I know I just laid a lot, I have it written down if you want me to repeat it, but those are some of my thoughts, so I'll just stop there for now, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember, your last question is embedded in the resolution that I brought forward here, because obviously to get this done in 30 and then 50 days is going to require us to consider the resource question, but I think we can do it relatively inexpensively. And and some of those conversations have already begun. Thank you. Vice Mayor Harris, and then Councilmember Geta. Excuse me, Councilmember Harris, I got to get
Yeah.
Change that. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. It took you two months to call me vice mayor. Maybe it'll
Sorry.
It took you two months to stop doing it.
I'll give you a full year, okay?
There you go. So, you know, this ordinance opens the door. It can't spell out everything to the letter. It's a good start. We went over this a couple of times at Lawn Ledge. You know, I've met with staff many times about it, and I'm comfortable with where it lands right now. Katie does bring up a couple of points that I'll address in a minute, but understand, we're not doing this in a void. The Railroad Shelter was the first attempt that we made at sheltering in the city in terms of a triage or a safe ground model, a low barrier shelter. And we learned a lot there. We should use some of those lessons, so I'll get to in a second. Secondly, the Modesto Outdoor Emergency Shelter, which myself and many staff visited, including our city attorney office, many people went down to have a look at that. They did an emergency shelter that went up to about 400 individuals, and they gave us a lot of advice. The first piece of advice that they gave us is 80, 80 people would be the sweet spot for an emergency shelter, to not go above that. If you go above that, service provision is too difficult, and the issues that happen in an encampment get too difficult to manage. So I took that advice to heart. We we started with 200 people at Railroad, and frankly, it was too much. It was too much. But, you know, we had a lot of successes there, and we had one particular failure, and I've brought this up to council before, and it concerns me a lot. We cannot allow drug sales to happen adjacent to these shelters. If we do, we will lose the confidence of all of our constituents. And we don't save the people living on the street, you know, from the perils of being out there if we actually enable drug addiction on the street. You know, I've talked about this a lot with Bridget Dean and Danielle Foster and LaShelle and all of SHRA. And the fact of the matter is, our staff does have a lot of experience with putting together a plan for shelter success. You might recall that Larry Carr often chimed in at council and said, we need to help the people who are easiest to help, the people who don't have a plethora of drug abuse issues, mental health issues. Right off the bat, we could have some pretty serious successes getting people into housing and get them there stably. I think that that's a good model that we should pursue, and we should work that out with our staff, because they are very capable in these areas. Another thing I'd like to say, as many callers act as if we have not housed anybody or had any successes, you'll find in the next presentation from SHRA just exactly what we have achieved, which has been very substantial for a couple thousand individuals. But the problem is, because of pandemic and and also residuals from the Great Recession, many more people are falling into poverty, and part of that is rising rents, people who become situationally homeless. I feel that we should focus on that population first and keep them from falling into the pitfalls of being out on the street, which is very often addiction and, you know, a furthering of the physical and mental issues that they have, and it makes it all that much harder to house people. That being said, I appreciate the mayor's urgency to to get a win. And yes, we can do pallet shelters. I highly encourage it. I know of a couple of spots where it could work, and that is a win, but I think an even easier win is safe car camping. Now, I've brought up in the past that in mid-March, we are going to take possession of 14 sanitation trailers. And we, this is, this is a great thing for the city, because now we have some real hardware with which to manage sanitation issues at whatever kind of project we come up with. Now, this ordinance as proposed is really about a ministerial permit for individuals or organizations who want to start a safe ground type model. It doesn't talk about the city particularly participating in the monetary burden of it, but I think we should do a hybrid approach where the city can work on the infrastructure piece, and we engage the advocates to actually do the management of these particular sites. And with a manage, with a hybrid model like that, I think that everybody will win. There frankly are very few organizations that could manage a safe ground. And this I know from what we went through at Railroad. It's difficult work, it's time consuming, and when you add service provision, it gets very technical. We need to lean on our staff to do any of these projects. I would like to come forward very soon with a proposal for safe car camping, because we are getting so much pushback from people about, you know, just massive amounts of car campers, like on Lathrop and in Point West and Dixie Anne in District Two. There are areas around the city where the impacts of these homeless camps are just so extreme that our constituents are losing their minds. There is a way forward here. I totally support the mayor bringing the urgency piece to it, and I'll look forward, because I feel it too. I think we all do. You know, we need a win. The quickest win is a safe ground model. Safe ground model is not permanent housing, it's not solving everybody's issues, but it takes pressure off the streets, and we need that, and we need it right away. I would not want to go back to the 300 foot. I think after much discussion at Lawn Ledge, we found that 500 feet was the sweet spot. There are a lot of properties that would be excluded by going to 500 feet, but we don't need hundreds of properties doing tiny safe grounds. What we need is some early wins to take some pressure off the neighborhoods while we work on larger solutions, which we are actually working on, and SHRA is doing a great job with them. I agree also that a 24 person limit might might be a little prescriptive, proscriptive? Prescriptive. There are sites where we could do more. For instance, the car camp site that I'm thinking about would probably hold 40 campers, and I would not want to limit it to 24, per se. And I agree with Katie also that paving, while absolutely preferred, maybe shouldn't be mandated, because I know of a couple of sites that are unpaved that would work well for car camping in the unpaved condition. So but but that being said, I think that this ordinance is a good first step. I would offer to staff the idea that we not mandate paving and that we do loosen the reins on a 24 person limit, that it should be determined by the abilities of the site to handle whatever population it does. So, you know, I would like to move the ordinance and the staff recommendations. I think the half mile limit is good. I think the 500 foot limit is good, but I do think that we should consider expanding it. And so I'd like to say to, in my motion, to say that we would have an upper limit of 80 persons if a site could accommodate that many. Very few sites will. I don't think people should lose their minds thinking we're going to start great big shelter sites. But let's not restrict ourselves. It's very expensive to start these kinds of things, and if we can get more advocacy with a few more people, we should do it. And the second piece of the motion is to say that paving is not mandatory.
Okay, so you need to open and close the public hearing as well, please.
And I will so do, open and close the public hearing and make my motion with those two amendments, not having requisite paving and perhaps up to 80 people.
So that's, that's So that's, that's taking some of Councilmember Valenzuela's suggestions. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, the only thing I want to, just before I turn it over to Councilmember Geta, agreed with most everything that you said and you've been a lawyer on these issues. Just one thing I just want to respond to, in terms of the urgency, I'm not looking for a win. I'm looking for a change in culture and performance here. That's the problem. I want a command center approach to getting thousands of people off the streets and making our streets cleaner and safer. That's what I want. It's a culture change. It's the same attitude that goes into how we do operate the command center during times of of emergency. It's that. It's not just a win. We got, oh, we got a single parking, parking lot and now we can breathe a sigh of relief. No, this is a priority. You've all said it. You continue to say it. The community continues to say it. We need to deploy all of our resources and all of our attention, or at least an equal amount of attention to any other priority, getting at this systemically with the county, by the way. So, thank you.
Well, Mayor, I of course agree with that.
I know you do.
It's a matter of, I wasn't going to stop at one car camping.
I know you weren't. I know you weren't. I just, I know you weren't. Good job. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, on your proposal, I do, I like the, I support the concept you're moving here. The only thing I would, I would ask as part, as it comes to the council is to also direct staff to look at the Pride Industry model that they're looking at efficiency housing and their, their concept of support and wraparound services with that. Not only do they have a proposal for immediate shelter that they'd like to get going, but also to work in the workforce training piece and they do have an experience of working with individuals different, with different levels on of need. And they're willing to look at low to no barrier types of programs as well. The interesting piece on that, Mr. Mayor, because is, and we talked about sending a market signal in, in past the press conferences, but they're willing to, to start looking at how do we create also manufacturing jobs for a product that could be exported as a solution to other cities. And that would have another benefit when to the city. Not only are we finding immediate solutions, but also creating local jobs. So I, as part of that, I'd like the staff to reach out to Pride Industries and look at how can we do, how can we look at what they're proposing? It's similar to the, the Hope Model as well that I've had a chance to meet with some of the folks on that issue. Now going to the ordinance, first, you know, on both the ordinance and on just what our staff has been doing. Thank you, Bridget Dean. I appreciate all the work and time you have put in, particularly in, in my council district and also during a time that was very difficult for you. So I want to let you know that I greatly appreciate how much you focused on this, even in an extremely challenging time for you. And you've stayed committed to the city and on the issues. And so I can't thank you enough for that. I also want to thank all the city staff who've been working on this. I think, you know, since even last summer, unfortunately, that's how long this has come, that we've been working on this to try to bring it to council. And so I think if there's any blemishes that it's taken us this long to come to taking an act on this. And in Lawn Ledge, I think we worked out a lot of the details and to where we are today and provide a realistic path for, for locations and shelter options. The ordinance allows private property owners to start their own, to use their land and start providing some kind of resources. And I want to make sure that I have heard some of the callers here. There are some requirements and there are some guidelines. And obviously, the guidelines that we have suggested and that the staff has suggested are intended for the success of, of not only the, the location and how it interacts with the attorney community, but for also for those who are going to participate in any kind of program or shelter. And then there are requirements that are specific for health and safety. And I think those are critical, some of those such as sanitary issues. And the only thing that I want to make sure that, that folks understand that if, that if we don't have success in these emergency shelter options, then we're going to have a more challenging time to get more participation. The, the, the issue that I've seen in, in Council District 6 is there aren't any available public land areas to, to begin any kind of these shelter options. So we're really reliant on private property owners to participate. So this ordinance helps us get to that point. And so I feel like this is a good step forward for us to do that. There are some impediments still that affect private property owners to participate, such as the paving issue. That's been a long time problem for us. We've been trying to look at the safe parking model, but the paving issue has been an issue. In District 6, we have about 1,800 parcels that would be eligible, more than any other district in the city. But many of them are unpaved or un, unused. And some of them, yes, they require a lot more work, but some of them might be in a position where they could be used. So I think the paving restriction is, is extremely burdensome. So I think working on that is, is critical. I also agree that, you know, that the 24 person piece is a bit restrictive because we don't know what the size of the parcels are. The variety of parcels that we have, at least in my council district, may be narrow and small and could only fit maybe 24 individuals. Others might lend itself to more. So I, I, I feel, but I think we need to have a method other than just the cap. So, I mean, I'm willing to support the motion as it is right now. But with the caveat of, and if, you know, Councilmember Harris, if you're okay with this in your motion, rather than a year report back, coming back in a six month report back so that we can see what the participation and the implementation has, how it's worked out and also a better understanding of how the wind down will occur. The last thing I'd like in, in the report back is an equity on siting. District 2 and District 6 by large have the largest number of available parcels for private property owners. Again, this requires private property owners to participate. So I don't, I don't see this becoming, you know, an immediate rush of people wanting to participate because it is, it is expensive, it is, it is burdensome to prep land and get things used to it. But I still think there should be an equity component on siting here as well. Again, this is all meant to make it easier for private property owners to want to participate. The last thing I also would like to see, a report back is on the indemnity, indemnification challenge, challenges or issues. I saw in the staff report that, that that could be problematic to indemnify property owners. But again, if it becomes too burdensome for a property owner or too, there's too much liability for a property owner to participate, we're going to have less, less individuals wanting to participate. So I think that's an important piece. The last piece on the 300 foot to 500 foot, I can appreciate the Councilmember Valenzuela's interest in this because of the restrictions in her district. But we also heard in, at Lawn Ledge, people and individuals wanting the, the number increased to 1,000 feet. And I would not be supportive of increasing it to 1,000 feet. In fact, we pushed it back to 500 feet because if you increase it more than 500 feet, then it really only concentrates this area in two districts. And that, that really will become District 2 and District 6. So we found that 500 foot was a good median where it increases opportunity throughout the city so that there is more participation and also for areas where sensitive uses. And I'll just bring up Elder Creek Elementary School, which is on the, on right adjacent to the industrial area. So less, that's less than 300 feet from that, from that zone. There are a number of places that could be available there. So I think the 500 foot actually creates a, a good, a good distance there. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. I just, I, on the last thing on the parking lot model, you know, you know, and why we're requiring certain things like sanitation is that we're already seeing a lot of businesses and communities where, where some folks are showing up with RVs and releasing a lot of the, their discharge onto the street or out in front of people's businesses. Again, this is, I think, what Councilmember Harris has put forth is great. Councilmember Jennings and I started to looking at, at how do we do a wraparound model with a parking, with the parking model before the pandemic started. And I think this ordinance will help us find more opportunities where we could actually see parking lot options throughout, throughout the city with sanitation support with it. So I'm glad to second the motion here. It's a start, but I would like a shorter report back. So Councilmember Harris, if you're okay with amending your motion to include a six month report back versus the one year report back.
Yeah, so, so Eric, I have no problem with that at all. You know, I suspect that we're going to be talking about these issues nonstop as from the moment we start the first safe ground shelter, we'll be talking about this and assessing it probably on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. So yeah, no issue, no issue talking about this, ad nauseam, because we need to make it work. And there is a way to make it work. And I know the mayor is committed to it. I certainly am. I believe all the city council is committed to making a material difference in as short a time as possible.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Harris. And the last I'll ask if the staff could work with, with my office. And I'm sure, I think Councilmember Laloie should have, may have the same concern. We have communities that are adjacent to industrial and manufacturing areas intermixed and those could be problematic. So I think working very closely with the council offices on, on any implementation is going to, is going to help this project move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Thank you very much, Councilmember Geta. Okay, is there any, any other members? I see Councilmember Vang, Tom Ashby, Councilmember Jennings and Councilmember Valenzuela again. Let's go in that order, okay?
Thanks, Mayor. First, I just want to say thank you to Tom and Greg and staff and also my colleagues on the Law and Ledge Committee, just for your, your work on this ordinance. And I just want to thank you, Mayor, for bringing your proposal to the dais with a sense of urgency. I think all of us know, I think all of us have heard even from our last week meeting, the reason why we all supported the citywide proposals because we know this is a crisis. You know, as we move forward with the implementation, depending if we, you know, all vote yes on this, I think it's also really important that this ordinance have safeguards to protect our unsheltered communities while also bringing them the greatest amount of services. And I do support this ordinance, but I have several just questions and questions for clarity. First is, I think a few of y'all touched on this, but Councilwoman Katie Valenzuela also touched upon this as well. It's just my questions around the financing piece. While this ordinance established requirements for legal temporary emergency shelter, I'm concerned that we don't have a finance plan in place to ensure that we have the programmatic support or guardrails to protect our unhoused, even if we have immediate temporary shelter. And I know that we're going to direct Howard to work with our CBOs and our partners. But I do have concern about this and I want to make sure that we're not moving in forward in a way that will set us up for failures. I actually do support Councilmember Harris' idea around a hybrid model. I think, I think that's great because we're definitely going to need, you know, county and our service providers. But this is still a collective responsibility. And I actually want to have a better understanding of the implementation. I know there's a, there's a work plan in place after this if council votes to move on this. But I really want to have a better understanding of the direct role of the city and the direct role of the county. And I wanted to ask you directly, Mayor, and also City Manager Howard Chan, what conversations have been had with the county up to this point around their, their collaboration around this effort? Because I think that's really important. I think we hear that time and a time again from our, from our residents in the city of Sacramento, right? That we're going to do our fair share. This is a collective responsibility. But would like to learn a little bit more about those conversations, Mayor and Howard Chan with the county. So that's my first question around the financing piece. Before I go on, should I just keep going?
Well, can I just, maybe we just briefly answer that? And I think we are planning to invite our county partners to one of our first workshops on the notion of a campus based model, which is another important part of the overall strategy. We are having extensive conversations with the county. They are informal at this point. And they range from how we can collaborate project by project, program by program. But also, we're beginning to have conversations about the fundamental issues of governance. Because ultimately, we cannot pilot every initiative between the city and county. This is a city and county challenge. And ultimately, I believe, and I think many others believe, that there has to be some form, some form of unified governance around this issue so that we are consistently pooling resources, pooling strategies and, and, and working even more closely together. Howard?
Yeah, so Councilmember Vang, thank you for the question. I have actually been talking to the county on a very regular basis, including with their interim chief executive. And the conversations have really been around exactly what the mayor is talking about. How do we better coordinate and what does that mean? What, what does that governance look like? I hearken back to when we first started engaging the county early on when the mayor was first elected. There was a series of two by two meetings. There were joint meetings. And so we're trying to take the best of what we tried already, maybe reform it a little bit and, and see how we can actually do, have the communication flow better between the two. You know, we haven't had discussions about the resources just yet. I mean, we're early on. When you talk about the finances here, I mean, it's a great question. So getting back to some of the earlier comments from the mayor, I think that, and, and from Councilmember Garrett, the, the issue of siting really is key here. I mean, if you turn your city staff loose with five locations that the council members come forward with, we will move heaven and earth to do that. I, I think that's, that's really the, the key there, but along with that is the financing. Right now, we're talking about using $250,000, which is, by the way, within my authority. That gives me flexibility to support some of these sites that might be operated by, you know, outside entities, CBOs. And also some challenges. I mean, by, by having outside entities operate some of these locations, they're not afforded some of the luxuries that we have on the city side if a, a public entity were to operate. So it's not this continuum of speed, risk, and, and the council is going to have to, going to deliberate what that looks like. And I know we're going to come back and have some updates here. The mayor and his resolution, he and I talked about this. If, again, if we can get some of the sites identified with the council. And what I mean by that is if the council comes forward and say, I have two sites in my district. Absent that, we're going to spend a lot of time trying to work through agreements with CBOs for site acquisition. I mean, you know, so, so there's a, there's some, a timing issue here. But I think the, the critical path is the site location. The financing, I think this council is very supportive in moving forward with propping up some of these early locations. But it is the location. It is something the mayor has hit on repeatedly.
Thanks, Howard. I, I appreciate that. I think it's just good for the public to also have a better understanding of the conversations that you and Mayor have been having with the county. Because I hear over and over again that it is definitely a collective responsibility and want to make sure that, you know, the city, we're going to do our part, but the county also steps up as well. The other part, I think I've heard from public comments and also from, also from community members really around the program support. And while I understand that this ordinance is really just setting the policy so that we could get something set up. And, and I know that we're going to have this items, these items are, are separate. I, you know, I, I'm also worried about not having the capacity level of providing the services that we need for unhoused neighbors. And I know that there are different needs for different communities. So it's going to be important for us to have different approaches. And I don't know if Law and Ledge, my colleagues on Law and Ledge talked about even a minimum level of connection or, or support to services for, for these, these, these sites, right? I think that's really important because, one, I think we're trying to stabilize, stabilize a crisis right now, but we are also trying to end homelessness. And so making sure that we think about the service piece, that's really critical. And then lastly, I know there's a motion on the table, but I, I like to also like to add Council, Councilwoman Valenzuela's recommendation regarding the notification period. I would support an extensive notification period to enable operators to find alternative housing, housing for our residents if we need, if we decide housing, housing for our residents if we need, if we decided that, you know, the time has ended, and I think that's important to make sure that we incorporate that in this emergency ordinance. And so I know we already have a motion on the table, but if possible, if, if that, if we can make that amendment, I think that would be important, especially to our operators if they choose to, to, to take this up. So, thank you.
Councilmember Vang, before she, before we go off of her, Mayor, if I could, I think Greg or Tom Pace, you know, I know I heard Councilmember Valenzuela bring this up, and I heard Councilmember Vang bring it up, but I thought there was a six-month wind down. Maybe you guys just told me that was your intent, but is that not codified in your language, Greg or Tom, to do a six-month wind down for ones that are already in place? And then the, then the emergency housing goes away, then we would work for six months to help people who are on-site find something else? Can you, can you guys answer their question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby, Tom Pace, Director of Community Development. As written right now, there isn't a specified period of time, but based on council's discussion, I would recommend, and also based on the request by Councilmember Garrett, that we look at a six-month report back, I would recommend that we use the shelter crisis declaration renewal period as the time to assess the amount of time needed to wind down facilities if we foresee the wonderful scenario that facilities would not be needed in the near future. In other words, as we come up on our one-year anniversary date, we've, we've extended the shelter crisis another year just a couple of weeks ago. As we get close to that time, if we continue to see the need for these provisions to be in place, we just renew it another year. If, however, we think we're getting close to a point where, you know, the problem is being solved and these facilities are no longer needed and this ordinance is no longer needed to be operative, then my suggestion would be that we adopt, you know, some period of time of notification or a shorter renewal, less than a year, but do that in a way, and then do notification to all the permit holders. So either way, I, I believe we can manage this so that people aren't surprised with the sudden termination of a shelter, but that we are very thoughtful about how we manage the shelter crisis declaration.
Let me make sure I got it right, just so we can get that and then go, right? Long day for us. What I hear you saying is sync up the wind down period with the report back period, and rather than having that be a year, have it be six months. That's what I heard as your recommendation. Did I get that right?
Yes.
And then Jeff, are you okay with that?
Absolutely. You know, frankly, Angelique, we've got to start something before we can assess it and think about a wind down. We just have to understand where we are.
I knew that Tom and Greg had told me that that's what they wanted, and I guess I just missed that it wasn't actually codified in there. So thanks for, if you'll add it, Jeff, I think that's great.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. You know, it's, it's, it's not a problem. What we need to do is start.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashby. Are you, are you finished? I'm sorry.
I am not, but Rick is before me, I believe, Mayor, Councilmember Jennings, so I'm...
Oh, good, okay, let's, let's go with Councilmember Jennings first.
If you, if you have a roll going, please continue, I'll come after you.
Okay.
I'll, I'll go quick, let's move through quick, because one thing we do not do well as a council is pace ourselves. We spend a lot of time on the first issue, by six o'clock, we're all exhausted and we still have half of a day left. So let me see if I can take us through it quick. I just, I heard both of them say that one, and I felt like we could fix it quickly. So thank you, Councilmember Harris, for accepting that. I assume your second is okay with it too, although I don't remember who your second was.
That was me. And the intent of the, of bringing back at the six months is, we may, I mean, different sites will have different wind down periods, but all depending on the size, so, but that's, that's fine with me.
Okay. All right, so I just want to say that, first of all, it's been really great to hear the insight of the new members on this. I'm really, for lack of a better word, proud's not quite the right word, but I'm impressed that they have honed in on some of the really challenging issues like long-term sustainable funding, partnerships with the county, partnerships with the CBOs, a diversified approach. This doesn't, this won't work for everyone. Tiny homes doesn't work for everyone, big shelters doesn't work for everyone. People experiencing homelessness are not, there's no panacea. So what I love about the five-point plan, which we're going to get to spend more time on, is that it is a diversified approach and tries really hard to come at it from an angle that can help people in all different situations. And I too would like to add my, my voice to the chorus of thanks to Tom and Greg. This type of thing is really challenging, and it's a really good example of when the city does step into a role, when, when you have Mayor Steinberg who comes in and insists that we're going to, we're going to do this and we're going to forge ahead. Some of the things that the city has to do is change things like zoning code to be able to participate, and that is challenging, and, and it scares people, and it does create anxiety. You heard real fears from people calling in today, but Councilmember Valenzuela is right, this doesn't mean overnight shelters are going to pop up like, you know, like it's spring with flowers. It means it gives us an opportunity for folks who want to engage in the conversation to begin to do so in a legitimate fashion. I would point out that I will support the up to 80 units per site, but I think it's probably not the right number either, but it's a good number to start with. 24 is too small. If we added one at Grove, we'd be in violation of our own code. So that's not the right number, but I'm not, I don't know if 80 is, it probably depends very much on the size and location of the site. So let's have that be something we keep our eye on when it comes back in six months to maybe some, something we might add, as the legislature would say cleanup language to in the future, but just see where we're at. I, I struggle a little bit with not requiring services right out of the gate. I know that we put it on there as, you know, something, a guidance, something we hope people do. I struggle with that a bit because services is our only way out. More important than anything we could do for people is get in there and try very hard to help them. So I'm okay with moving forward without it. I'd rather it was in there, but I think in six months, if we come back and it wasn't there, we should talk about if that would change things or have a bigger impact because really, you know, creating spaces for people that are safe is important, but also making sure that we're wrapping services around them and trying hard to move them into permanent supportive housing or, or find solutions that are individualized for the folks who are experiencing homelessness is, is the way out, right? Not just creating shelter units everywhere, that's not the way out, right? So we don't want anybody to stay in any one of these places any longer than necessary. I'd also like to take this moment, just in case anybody didn't realize, what a superstar we have in Bridget Dean. I don't know what kind of lucky lottery the city of Sacramento won, but whatever it is, keep playing that lottery because she is a treasure. So thank you to her. I think for me, there are some places in the city, Grove included, where infrastructure and things are in place, and there might be some opportunities there. And I just want to say to the, on, to the mayor's comments and to his really strong assertions at the beginning of this meeting, that's exactly what he needs to do. That's his role, and it's our role to respond, right? And, you know, this is what he wants to do, and I think he's putting us all to a challenge and putting our staff to a challenge. If the city manager feels that he can financially manage 30 over the next month or so, and we can get that up, I know this mayor is shooting for the moon, but I think we're all just trying really hard to figure out how to achieve some of these goals and move forward, right? And I appreciate his energy in encouraging us today. And then I guess I would just say finally, for me on, on this particular item is, I do sometimes struggle with the danger of looking at these one by one by one when we're doing financing, because in, in moving the mayor's piece of this forward, I know we're not exactly voting on it, but agreeing to bring it back and talk about it, and all of us sort of saying we support it, we may be elevating it above other things that you're going to hear about in a few minutes from LaChelle Dozier and her team at SHRA, that those same dollars could go to. So I really want to just encourage us to always take as holistic of approach as possible so that when we're trying to do this work, we are diversifying, and we're sort of taking a mental note of all of the pieces, like which part of the city, which part of the homeless population, how much money, how long-term, which CBOs and which partners we're using to, to really try to get out the best result possible. So that's it for me. I think the mayor stepped away, so Councilmember Jennings, you're, you're up next.
Cool, cool. I just want, I'll, I'll build on what, I'll build on what you were saying, a couple of things. Bridget Dean is truly a superstar. I've been dealing with an individual on a one-on-one basis to try to get them off of the street. They've been on the street for the last year. They were living behind my trash can at my center on, on, in North Sacramento. So I've been dealing with that, and we've been able to get her into a hotel, motel for seven days, and now we're going to extend it for seven more days in order to develop a plan of services for her that will deal with the issues that she's talking about. Now, the only reason I tell you about her is there's no way that we could develop that plan of services if she didn't have some level of trust in myself and my organization and my staff, and she finally admits that she's ready for those services. And so sometimes housing is the first step to get to the services, and when they can go together, that's all the better, but sometimes they're not ready for the services, they're ready for the housing to come off the street, and then you can help to get them ready for the services over time. And so we've seen now many individuals who have come through our doors that we've done this with on a case-by-case basis, and they don't all fit in the same box. They are very individualized in how they receive the services and what services we can go. And it's a strategic action plan for each one of them. I just want to put that out there because as much as I want services out of the gate, I also know that everybody's not ready for that. And one of our speakers talked about that this is a servant-resistant population that doesn't want to come off, out, off the street. And I don't ever want us to accept that as the, the, the norm. I don't ever want us to accept that principle because if we do, we might as well give up and not do anything to help those that are on the street. So I, I want us all to always understand that even though they may be service-resistant, when we are able to contact them, get in touch with them, work with them, help them, develop that plan of action, we can get them off the street. Fortunately, with this individual that I'm working with now, her entire family has now contacted me because they know I'm working with her, and they're helping to develop that plan so that their loved one will come back to them. I like everywhere that we're going with where we are right now, the mayor's sense of urgency, Tom, Greg, staff, everybody on what we're doing to bring us to this point where we are right now. I do want to make one final point, and Howard, this might be for you. Somewhere along the line, there's a, there's not a good definition between sanitation, safety, and sweeps. There's just not a definition for the public to truly understand what are we doing? Are we sweeping and taking everything from them as the definition that was given earlier? Are we providing safety and sanitation to help clean up area around them so it makes it safer for those that are there and those that are living in the immediate area? I think we have to come up with what that definition is, and we also have to make sure people know what we're doing, especially us as council members. Because right now, I don't know that all of us know whether or not there are sweeps going on or something else. And from what I'm hearing, there are no sweeps going on, but I hear caller after caller after caller after caller after caller call in and say that, you know, we're sweeping and taking everything from them and disrupting their life. And I just need to understand for myself, what is the real deal? What is happening so that all of us can understand it and we can defend it to say we're doing what's in the best interest of those that are on the street? So we can push them back, they can be in code, other people can walk past them, they can live in comfort, and they can have all their belongings. So I, that's the only thing, the last point I want to make on this because I'm ready to move forward with the vote.
Right, and so let me just say fairly quickly here is that we are coming back next week, and that's what Bruce is going to be reporting on, but I will tell you categorically, we're not doing sweeps anywhere in the city.
Say it again.
Say it again.
Say it again.
We're not doing any sweeps in the city.
We have not done sweeps in the city.
That is correct.
Not, not as it relates to this period of time.
That's right.
We may have done it before in the past years ago, but not now.
Right, so we have the public health order that we need to be mindful of, and we also have the decision with Boise that we're very mindful of, and we're trying to navigate that, but there, there are some of the exceptions that this council has been privy to, and that's our critical infrastructure ordinance. We have where private property owners have requested us to remove individuals and property for trespass, and that's with written consent, or if they're blocking, you know, public rights away that causes a safety issue. Those are the three instances that we will clear. Other than that, we have not done any sweeps. So that's why it's really important that Bridget is coming next week to walk us through what that looks like. She has a full presentation that we're going to go through, and so I'm looking forward to the conversation because like you, we hear the public comments, we get the emails, we get phone calls, and it's just not accurate.
The only thing I suggest next week, Bridget, is that we use some of the real-life controversial examples that people are pointing to, and then let, let's allow the back and forth so that we can differentiate, you know, not only definitionally, but also exactly what's happening and what the justification is for any action that the city or its contractors are taking, okay? Let's not make it generic, let's focus on a couple of the key...
That is the plan, Mayor.
That is the plan, yep, that's the plan.
Okay, good.
Deal. Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Valens, Councilmember Sheneer, and Laloie, you have not talked yet, then I'll get back to Councilmember Valenswela because I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to speak.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. One, one is on the, on the, what people refer to as the sweeps, I believe, one is Stockton Boulevard, which was private property, the other was safety issues on Al Hambrun north of Broadway, which was for individuals there. I, I have three kind of points that I wanted to make. Number one, and I talked to staff about this a lot, you know, we were given maps of quite a few sites around the city, most of which are, that would be eligible, not sites that we're moving to, but that would be eligible for this type of, of program. And most, most of them are privately owned, there are some city sites on there. And what I talked to staff about, which I'm hoping they could do, is some basic checklist of the characteristics of a site that would be useful as we go forward. I think that would eliminate a lot of heartache that we, and I, and I've now gone, as you know, I've gone through this for a number of sites, so I'm trying to draw on that experience for both myself and, and all of my colleagues. But if we could have some type of rubric that we work through on those sites to see what really might work well and what won't work well, and we could get rid of a lot, a lot of heartache upfront. So that's the first thing, and I would request that staff could do that, and we have a lot of work that we've done in the past, going back to Cassandra Jennings' work and, and others, so I don't think we have to recreate the wheel here. I think we have a lot of that information. This is slightly different, but we have a good starting point. So that's number one. Number two is, this is doing, this is, you know, walking and chewing gum at the same time, is I do think we need to really look hard at the dollars on this and what we can do. The last thing that I want to get into is going, and, and I will do this, I mean, I think it's the right thing to do overall, but I don't want to go back, go to bat for a site, incur what I think is, is a lot of folks who will not want it in their neighborhood, only to find out that we don't have money to support it. So I want to make sure that we're realistic about what we can do, how much we can afford going forward, at the same time we're doing this. And a couple of people have, have brought it up, but that's my reasoning behind it. I, I want to, I want to spend my time and whatever shits I have realistically, and for something that can be successful. I don't want to set us up, as, as Councilmember Vang said, I don't want to set us up for failure on that. The third thing, and, and I think, Mayor, this is a question for you. I agreed with you when we started this around the whole base closure idea, that these things need to come forward in total, you know, for the city. So whether we have five sites or we can get something in every district and have eight sites, whatever that looks like, I think that becomes an up or down vote for this, for the city council. I hope we're still proceeding along that path because it will be a lot easier, I think, on all of us. So I'm just wondering if that's a process on process.
Let me clarify, I thought I'd been clear, but I, boy, it's a great question. What we're really to doing, what, what we're being asked to do today, consider it... What we're really to doing, what we're being asked to do today, consider it an interim step, consider it an interim ordinance, no matter what the title is. Because it will then fold into the master plan. Because the master plan, as I said earlier, is essential. Using the base closure principles, namely, once we cast a vote, June the first, thereabouts, that will be the final siding decision, not just for safe ground, not just for tiny homes, but also for shelters, for permanent supportive housing and for all of the other strategies that are going to be necessary to demonstrate real progress.
I I I understand that, but here here's my point, I think, and I know that these will not need council approval. Right? As written in the ordinance, they can go forward without that. I think our individual efforts to get this done across the city, and I think it's imperative that 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 different districts share the load on this will be much easier on us when people see that there are sites all around. So I'm just looking maybe Howard and Bridget, this is something you guys can figure out. How do we do that and message that publicly more than message it? How do we do it publicly? So that people see that that there's a fair share piece going on across the city. Those are my three points.
Yeah. Well, again, we have to transparency is crucial and reporting consistently about where the beds and where the safe camping is being located so we can add it up as we go. Maybe we ought to have a tote board, you know, so that it's very clear to the public. But remember, the master plan, which I think and you all agree is it is the major part of our strategy. You would be and the public would be incredibly frustrated if we said we're not doing anything else until we vote on those long-term sites in June and who knows, you know, it could be July. Uh, if we did nothing in between. And so this is an attempt to say, no, we are going to work now to get people indoors while we do exactly what you described. And we just have, we have to document it. You're right.
No, I understand, but I I also think that we have to have, there has to be a way to portray to the city and to our neighborhoods that they're not alone, that we're not just doing things in one district or another. And I I know that two and six have the most potential sites. I'm trying to think in my head, like, what do I have that's not built that we can get to? And I I'm sure some of my colleagues, the pro tem, have some things, the same types of challenges. So we just need to show this community that there is fair share and that this is this is a citywide, not just a citywide problem, but a citywide solution.
I totally agree. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Loaui.
Well, thank you very much. First and foremost, I think all my colleagues have done it already, but I have to say it too. And I want to really thank Bridget Dean for being so available. And the great thing about her is she's very direct to the point versus either sugarcoating it or try to say, you know, I I don't see it. So I I really appreciate and I'm very excited that you are the person that's involved and in charge of this situation that we all want to fix. With that said, when regarding my district, District Two, we've we've been one of the hardest-hit districts probably after District Six when it comes to the homeless community. And I am extremely compassionate about this community. But when I when I see, when I see this ordinance, some questions come up. And when we try to say that we don't have to ask the neighbors whether they're okay with it or not, um, because how my district is zoned, that brings up some questions. And that's going to create some tension just between the existing community members. We do have an existing shelter that has that has been used for tiny homes. Um, I would like to look into that side, especially with the new resolution that Mayor just presented today. And hopefully, and and I'm, we're going to hear from a couple, in the next hearing set about that site. But regarding the ordinance, I think it's a little bit too. Um, and I, everybody's been so supportive of this ordinance. So I I hate to kind of throw some salt on it, but again, I think when I look at my district, we have homeless encampment almost on everywhere within the district, predominantly in residential areas. So when I read this, I don't see the the guarantee that's bringing to the community that says, hey, if we can create these sites, X percentage of the current homeless situation within D2 will go away. So that's one of the major concerns that my residents have, the residents in District Two have, and I have the same concerns. Not involving the neighbors to know what what's happening, that's my, that's a major question that I have. The the winding down, if if a private entity is, a private homeowner has decided that they were going to make their backyard in into a a temporary shelter. And now we we say we don't need the temporary shelters. How is that individual protected by law to remove that that shelter out of their out of their house or their backyard? So I think we're on the right track, but there's a lot more questions that I think I I need answered. So on on this particular ordinance, unfortunately, I need more time to be able to get a yes out of me. So as of right now, unfortunately, I have to be a a no with its current condition and current language.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, Councilmember Loaui completely respect your point of view and and you're right. District Two has been hit very hard. Remember, the point of all of this is to alleviate the alleviate the the pain and the difficulty that the people on the streets and the affected communities are feeling now, including District Two. And they use the word guarantee. And I just want to say to you that in in our line of work here, um, there are no guarantees. Um, it's all about trying to put the tools together to build the confidence that we can actually make it better. And that and this ordinance, I believe, accomplishes that. I'm not trying to talk you into a vote other than what you believe is best for your district. Uh, but I just want to say the idea, if the if the test is a guarantee, um, then that's going to be hard, I I think, to ever, you know, meet that.
I appreciate it, Mayor, but keep one thing in mind that my district today, it's overrun by cannabis. And now we have the homelessness that, again, it's it's very dear to my heart that we have to solve. And in the last years or so, uh, we haven't seen any light at the end of the tunnel that is going to be benefiting the district and its residents. Um, but I'm all in. And as I said, the language of this ordinance has me a little bit worried again because is District Two going to become the the site that we're going to try this on? And and District Six are going to be two top primary sites. Simply when you look at the the reports, obviously, we 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 have the top, we're we're on top of the list as far as available sites. And then, so I'm I'm a little bit concerned, as I said. Um, I I need I need a little bit more information and, but unfortunately for today's meeting, I have to say a a no to an ordinance. But I'm definitely open to the the new resolution that you put out today before.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Last comment here, Councilmember Valance, then we're going to vote.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think I'm having the opposite problem, which is that I feel like I'm not going to have enough sites to choose from after this passes. But I appreciate the discussion, which is why I wanted to float amendment ideas about the process that my law and led colleagues went through to get to the language we have today. So I wanted to ask if it was possible, because generally with planning, there's some sort of like exemption or deviation process that can be followed if like we can meet a certain requirement and say, hey, we have this lot in D4, it's within a setback distance, but like, I'm cool with it. The folks that are close by are cool with it. Is that something that we could explore as a part of this ordinance? And I don't know if it's implied and maybe that's a good staff question that like exceptions could be granted if certain criteria were met, but um, I'm having the opposite problem here where I'm worried I'm looking at this language and that I'd have no lots to offer in my district, even though as my council, my council colleague, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby, said, talking about holistically instead of one by one. You know, one idea we've been talking about is we have certain private lot operators that have multiple lots across downtown. It wouldn't it be cool if we said, hey, we're going to do a lease with you for like a certain number of spots, a certain number of like lots for overnight car parking, you know, as needed and kind of be more strategic like that. But um, yeah, I think I'm having the opposite problem. So I want to ask if like some sort of exemption, if like our office says it's cool and we're working with the stakeholders that are within the setback distance, whether it's museums, schools, whatever that is, and they say it's cool if we could still pursue sites.
Mr. Pace, never say no to a member who's willing. How do we answer that affirmatively, please?
Yeah, uh, yes, the answer is yes, we do have a mechanism in our existing code uh, to address shelter facilities. And so uh, we will work with you on those. Also, I would say that city-sponsored facility, this ordinance is really for privately initiated activity. So if this is a city-sponsored activity, I think you have a lot more flexibility.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. And I appreciate that we're going to have a conversation next week about resources and what the city can sponsor. So with that, that's the end of my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you all very much for a great discussion. Thank you, members of the pull-up. There is a motion. Uh, and a second, the motion was amended. This includes opening and closing the public hearing. Madam clerk, is that right?
That is correct. Motion was made by Councilmember Harris and a second by Councilmember Gata.
Okay, let us call the board of members, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby. Councilmember Loaui. Councilmember Loaui.
You're.
You're muted.
He said no. I heard the no.
No.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. That passes eight to one. Thank you all very, very much. Um, we now move to the last item on the discussion calendar, which is a review of the funding strategy known as the Five Point Plan. So I see, uh, Michelle Dozier, the Executive Director of Sacramento Housing and redevelopment Agency, and Sarah O'Daniel, who is here as well, as well as Danielle Foster. Uh, and so why don't you take it away, please?
Okay. I'll just kind of introduce the item and then Sarah's going to do the presentation. First of all, I'd just really like to thank the council for giving us an opportunity to come back and really talk about a lot of the good work and hard work that has gone over in the past year in terms of homelessness. And so we're really happy to really present an overview, a lot of those efforts and make sure that we kind of catch those council members who are new, up to speed, and also a refresh for our current council members. So Sarah O'Daniel, our Deputy Executive Director, who's in charge of homelessness uh, for SHRA is going to do the presentation. Sarah?
Good afternoon. Can everyone see me? Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Sarah O'Daniel and I'm with the Sacramento Housing and redevelopment Agency. Um, I'm going to share my screen and show the PowerPoint. I need to go back. Well, we'll leave it here. Again, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Sarah O'Daniel with SHRA. And on January 5th, it was your wish to receive an update on the Five Point Plan and other homeless initiatives that we have been working on collaboratively with the city during the last 12 months. Today, I am here with Danielle Foster from the city. And we will jointly provide you with our update of work that has been accomplished. And Bridget Dean, who is the superstar today, she is also available from the Office of Community Response to answer any questions related to the city's update. As context, for the new council members and a refresher for existing council members, the Five Point Homeless Plan was presented to council in December of 2019 in order to provide a continuum of housing options for homeless adults and children. Specifically, the five options were the scattered site model, safe parking, sleeping tents, cabins and shelters, motel conversion, and building homeless and permanent supportive housing. Today, Danielle and I will provide you with an update of these initiatives that we have worked together collaboratively. Funds may be limited, but we have collectively looked at grant opportunities, leveraged CARES funds, state home key and bond funds, and other resources to make these projects and initiatives happen.
Thanks, Sarah. Yes.
Oh, go ahead. Um, our first update is on the city scattered shelter sites. Uh, we have a few different contracts with scattered shelters, including our forty men and women beds that we contract with Saks Up Forward to provide. Um, through eight locations, we've got houses that shelter four to six individuals per location. We also have contracts with local transitional aged youth providers and have multiple shelters providing sixty-six beds in total, including host homes models and smaller shelter models that we're using right now. Um, and we've funded those through our first round of HAP funds. Um, and then recently has, as has been mentioned already today, we stood up the Winter Respite Motel voucher program on December 18th. Um, this is a city-initiated program in order to provide non-congregate shelter during the COVID times. Um, so we've worked with three local motel owners to provide vouchers for individuals, couples, families. Um, we've been able to really accommodate a different types of households based on needs, including some with pets if they have accessibility needs. And we're in a contract with Hope Cooperative to provide some support services and resource and referral services. And as of the date of this report, it was at one hundred and fifty guests. I think now we're over two hundred with over seven hundred voucher nights. So it's been a really successful program that we've been able to stand up. And it's in partnership with our business community, both providing the shelter space and we're working towards expanding food options as well. Sarah?
Thank you, Danielle. The second initiative is safe parking and I know you all talked about it today in your previous item. The goal of this initiative is to keep families safe, especially those that are living on the streets. Um, and the goal was to have it to serve at least twenty vehicles, including RVs for a hundred and twenty days or sixty vehicles annually. Uh, it is important, as you all mentioned, that there are also services that are available for the adults to get them out of living in their cars indefinitely. Um, space for the children to do their homework and tutoring for them as well, have security available so they are safe and that there are showers, meals and restroom facilities for them as well. Both SHRA and the city have been in discussions with various local owners, community-based organizations and faith-based organizations regarding this initiative, but there is no update at this time. However, in light of initiatives that are underway to keep the homeless safe on the streets, I would like to highlight the mobile restroom program that has been spearheaded by Councilmember Harris. In September of last year, SHRA staff was tasked to purchase mobile restroom and shower equipment utilizing CARES funds. Um, and this is again, an initiative to keep the homeless safe on the streets with hygiene trailers. Staff immediately set to work, but it was interesting, it was very hard to find the equipment because guess what? Everybody around the country was doing the same. They were all looking for these trailers. But we were resourceful and we have purchased to date sixteen standard restrooms, an ADA bathroom, two ADA restroom and shower combo units, six standalone shower units with sinks, generators, trucks and lots of supplies. Again, this is a partnership between the city and SHRA. And now the next step is to look at sites for deployment and to contract with an operator to manage the program. So this program is almost ready to go. Here are some pictures related to the the mobile restroom program. On your left side, you see the standard. On your left side, you see the standard restroom trailer, uh, what they look from the outside and inside. And on the right side, an ADA restroom combination unit. Related to the sleeping cabins, tents, and shelter, um, goal, uh, there are many initiatives that have been underway during the last 12 months. Um, actually, starting with Capital Park Temporary Shelter. This, as you know, is a historic, uh, motel located right across from the Capitol. It operated as a motel for a long time and transitioned in September to this temporary emergency shelter. VOA, or Volunteers of America, was contracted with as the provider onsite. And over 13 months, we were able to get 115 homeless off the streets each night and give them shelter. This was no easy feat. It wasn't just a shelter that was, um, ready to go. This was an old, old motel. And there were things breaking down almost on a daily basis, but there was the elevator, plumbing, heating. However, we were able to keep the hotel intact, have our homeless guests safe, uh, with a roof over their head. There was case management, laundry service, three meals provided a day, um, access to showers, and the goal was to have everybody rehoused in the community. 420 unduplicated individuals were sheltered during this timeframe. Over 42,000 meals were served and 149 guests were moved into permanent housing. The next initiative is the Emergency Bridge Housing Initiative. We worked again in partnership with the city and we got resourceful and applied for state funds that were available. These are the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Funds, or HAP funds. We applied last February and these funds were received. 5.6 million was received and the property was made available by Pastor Joyner of St. Paul's Church of God in Christ. And it's on Grove Avenue. This initiative houses 48 homeless transitional age youth, or TAE, in double occupancy cabins. So that was our goal in February before the pandemic hit. Once the funding was received, we went to work to get the site improvements on this property, have the cabins ordered. All the cabins are connected to heating and air conditioning units. Security cameras are around the property. There's video surveillance taking place 24 hours a day. And the site has bathrooms, showers, ADA cabins, and ADA restroom facilities. And we contracted with First Step Communities. You heard from Steve Waters earlier today, um, who has a lot of experience, um, working with the homeless. And again, with these, uh, with, with the TAE population, you know, there's intense case management, helping them gather their documents, assisting them with their GED, um, employment. There are some that are in job training programs, some that are employed. And, um, the goal again is to have them stabilized and then, uh, find housing for them. So currently with the pandemic, we have single occupancy in the cabins. And so we have 24 TAE on any given night sleeping in these cabins. Um, and we have 15 TAE who have moved into permanent housing since June, which isn't a long time ago. Um, this is an update from the staff report where there were only 11 listed to be in permanent housing. Here is a picture of the cabins out at Grove Avenue. The next initiative, um, is the Meadowview Navigation Center. Soon after we launched the Emergency Bridge Housing, we worked, um, on the Meadowview Navigation Center. Here, the goal is to house 100 homeless women. Uh, City Public Works was the lead in developing the site um, and to put sprung structures in place and accompanying office structures, um, and storage. The city and SHRA again, applied for HAP funds and received, um, over 6 million for this initiative. Construction was completed in late September. Um, and October 1st, we opened the, the navigation center to 50 homeless women due to the pandemic. The operator for this site is Volunteers of America. And I did want to mention that priority is given to the homeless women that are on the streets surrounding this center. This site, you can see all the amenities and services that we have on this site. What's different from EVH is that this site also has kennels available for, uh, dogs. One thing I would also like to stress is that there is intensive engagement with the women to help them get stabilized. And I just wanted to give you a flavor of some of the, um, the, the workshops that are available to them. Relapse prevention, stress and anger management, goal setting, employment support, personal development, organization and planning, ready to rent, and lease and renter support. So really trying to prevent, provide them with all the resources so they can stabilize and, uh, find an income stream so they can move into housing. Uh, the budget from the state also provided rehousing dollars. So there are funds to help them with their first and last month's, uh, rent, uh, security deposit, et cetera. Right now with the pandemic, um, we, we are again with 50 homeless women at the site. Uh, we only opened up on October 1st, but since then, we have five women who were placed in permanent housing. Again, that is, uh, a little higher than what was in your staff report, which indicated that there were four. I want to thank the excellent partnership with the city in getting this project off the ground. Public Works, the city manager's office, uh, Bridget, uh, everybody. We also want to thank the city for the two pallet homes that are onsite, uh, so that way we can isolate any individuals who might be, uh, symptomatic or have the COVID virus. So thank you again to the city. Here are some pictures. This is what the sprung structure looks like. Um, in the middle, there are two of them. One is for the dining area and one is for the sleeping area. And on the left side, you can see, uh, a glimpse of, uh, the, the eating area and then the, their beds. And you can see these quilts have been donated, uh, to Volunteers of America to provide that homely touch to the women, um, as they rest their heads. I'll get the gist of this in terms of going on to the next slide. Um, the next initiative that I would like to talk about is the X Street Shelter. This is one that is coming online, um, right now. And we are embarking on this, uh, X Street Navigation Center located in District 5. This center will house 100 homeless adults and priority will be given to those living in the surrounding area. There was a slight delay in getting the construction started as, uh, the lease needed to be signed with Caltrans and Caltrans needed federal approval. Either way, the lease is signed right now. Construction is underway and Public Works is the lead. We anticipate, uh, that the work will be completed sometime this summer and that we will then start, uh, operating by late summer timeframe. We will be coming back to you in March requesting funding for this initiative to administer and operate the center. At that time, we will then move into the RFP process to select an operator. You can see on the right side that there are many services and amenities that will be available at this site as well. I'd like to turn it over to Danielle to talk about city initiatives.
Thanks, Sarah. Uh, one of our ongoing initiatives is of course the North Fifth Street Shelter, where we provide shelter beds for 104 unsheltered adults. Right now, in times of COVID, we're at 50% capacity there as well. But this shelter is run in partnership with Shelter Inc., a private provider. And we are using emergency service grant funds, which are federal funds that we get for this purpose. We connect homeless individuals with services and provide rehousing steps through the Shelter Inc. contract. And, um, we've, we're continuing that with those upcoming ESG funds. Um, the other new initiative related to winter shelter, um, that the Office of Community Response, Bridget and I have stood up, and this one's kind of in transition right now, is switching use of some of our Cal Expo trailers, um, from solely COVID response and isolation to transitioning half of those towards winter shelter for women and children. Um, this is a great partnership. Not only does the county, um, respond on the COVID response side, we are working with Goodwill, um, the onsite staff for Cal Expo, and a number of providers to help with maintenance and, and trash and security to ensure that these trailer units be provided, um, safely and sanitarily. Um, this time period will start from about now till, till through, um, mid-February or the end of February, at which time we'll turn over the units for their next use. We're looking at some long-term options for the trailers, which may include transitional housing, um, at future sites. So this is something that we will be talking about as part of our master siting plan in these upcoming meetings. And then some other new initiatives. Um, as council is aware, uh, we've been working with St. John's Program for Real Change on a, an interim housing program. This is an exciting project where we've leveraged both local COVID relief funds with some of the state home key funding to provide 11 two-bedroom manufactured housing units, um, in, in quick time. The two-bedroom units allow for 22 to 30 beds total because it will either be shared housing or moms with children sharing units. Um, and this provides for much-needed interim housing for women and children who are unsheltered and may come into a short-term emergency situation, emergency shelter, but need more of a, an interim housing option while they find permanent rehousing, um, and affordable housing options. Um, so they will be escaping either domestic violence, addiction, past trauma, all, all focused on, uh, leaving homelessness. And then as Sarah mentioned, we do have pallet homes at the city purchased with some of our COVID relief funds. We purchased 10 in total. And we have deployed two of them over to the Meadowview site, um, in order to provide for the isolation, to, um, isolate anyone who has COVID symptoms or has been diagnosed. So that's been a great use of those funds or those homes. And we'll be looking at other sites to deploy the last eight.
Thank you, Danielle. Moving to the fourth, uh, point of the homeless plan, this is the motel conversion. Um, I talked a little bit about the temporary shelter that was at Capital Park, but that temporary shelter closed on October the 31st of last year and has now transitioned into, uh, into the rehab for permanent supportive housing, specifically for 134, um, housing units. Each of the housing projects that are mentioned, um, in the staff report and here in this presentation involve a cocktail of different funding sources that I'm not going to list all of them, but they are listed in your staff report. Mercy Housing is the developer for this project. And as you can see, you know, there are amenities that are going to be in all of the units, including kitchenettes, refrigerators, um, sinks, et cetera. Um, it is anticipated that these units will come online in 2022. The next project is the La Mancha project. This came before you just a very short time ago. And again, this is, uh, looking to, uh, to do permanent supportive housing in District 8. It's a former WoodSpring Suites on La Mancha Way. Mercy Housing is the developer and operator, and they will rehab and convert, um, 100 permanent supportive housing units. Um, I do want to highlight that state home key funds were received for this initiative. And again, lots of amenities and services at this site. Here are some pictures of the hotels, um, at this current time. Um, I also wanted to then, uh, move on to the fifth point, which is permanent supportive housing or homeless housing, um, that is underway or about to be underway. Uh, the first one is Lavender Court in District 4, where 20 homeless and 32 affordable housing units are being built. This is new construction and is LGBTQ friendly. The developer is Mutual Housing. And at this site, there will be community space and lots of resident services and should be ready for occupancy in fall of 2022. And there is a picture of the rendering there to your right. Speaking holistically of both city and county projects, in the county, uh, there are 46 homeless units being built at Sunrise Point in, uh, Citrus Heights. Jamboree and Hope Cooperative are the developers. Again, there will be community space, lots of resident services. Financing is to close shortly and construction to start in April. And construction is anticipated to be completed in fall of 2022. At Coral Gables and Villa Hardin in District 8, we have a combination of new infill development and rehabilitation of the current Villa Hardin development. Uh, 38 homeless units and 43 affordable housing units, um, are being built. There will be amenities that will be shared, uh, including open space area, barbecue space, playgrounds, laundry facilities, and much more. The developer is the John Stewart Company. And the project is partially funded and they will be applying for bond funds in February. If successful, construction will begin in fall of 2021. Danielle?
Thanks, Sarah. And very similar to the St. John's project, but, um, now doing permanent supportive housing. We also have a partnership with Weave, um, and both using home key funds and COVID relief funds again. And they are, um, providing nine two-bedroom manufactured housing units on a parcel purchase using some of those funds. Um, this too will provide for either shared housing or family housing, um, with a community garden, permanent supportive, sort of services from Weave, um, on a regular basis to make sure residents are successful. And they are own, owning and managing the site and also addressing, uh, folks that are escaping domestic violence and human trafficking. We expect that both of those projects, the St. John's project and the Weave project, be occupied by the end of March. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you. And finally, I just wanted to conclude with a couple of projects that are pending financing, and they're both new construction. One is, um, called On Broadway, uh, located at 1901 Broadway. The developer is EAH Housing. And the goal is to develop 37 homeless and 101 affordable housing units. A fully funded construction could begin in early 2022. And the second project is in the county. Um, it is called Mutual Housing on the Boulevard with 67 homeless units and 58 affordable housing units. The developer is Mutual Housing. And a fully funded construction could begin in fall of 2021. Here is, um, rendering of 1901 Broadway. To summarize, in partnership with the city, in the last year, we have created 725 shelter beds for adults and for families and transitional age youth. 455 homeless units and 234 affordable housing units of all different bedroom sizes. So definitely assisting a lot of homeless individuals, um, adults and children. Looking forward, it, um, I just wanted to conclude at this time to say that we have accomplished a lot and there is a lot underway at this time. And we look forward to having additional resources be made available to continue this pipeline of housing and services for the homeless. This concludes my presentation. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Well, the mayor stepped away for a second. What we're going to do is we have four members of the public who wish to speak. So let's go ahead and do that, and then we'll come back to the council. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Good afternoon, caller.
Hello? You have two minutes. My name is Robert Cobham, uh, part of Sacramento Eviction Defense Network. And what is not being talked about, what's going to happen if AB 15 doesn't pass the state and, uh, or a city council approves equivalent of that? You're going to see a lot of evictions, a lot more homeless. And I don't think that's HIA or any, uh, entity in Sacramento can handle that. So my suggestion is, uh, talk to, uh, Governor Newsom or, uh, incoming, uh, President Biden and get some funding for Sacramento and California. And, and as far as, uh, Capital Park Hotel, I had a friend that was living there for years. And he told me that was deplorable conditions when he, uh, when HIA took over it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Um, hi, my name is Nikki. And I've been calling into this council a long time. Actually, coming in back, back before. And mostly talking about, uh, homelessness and the need to come up with solutions that serve, um, people, but also their autonomy, their dignity, um, and their self-determination. And so I just want to encourage that with this. You guys move forward with all your new plans, um, that you are. But you remember that having, you know, client-centered, trauma-informed services that people can self-determine, people can opt into, that they can choose, and that even as you build them, that they could be a part of doing that building. That would be just the hugest win for Sacramento, for those most impacted, to have a voice in this process and to be able to help build programs that will work to change their own lives because they are the ones who will know what will work for that. On another note, as much as we appreciate the city trying to identify and define what sweeps are to us and to the larger community, we know, as people who've been out there for years, talking to people there while these things happen, you know, folk, anything from a verbal move-along order to, as Bridget tried to narrowly define it, a no-notice police removal of your property, which is not by any means the only way a sweep can happen. Even when these notices happen, the fear, the fear of the police coming to move you along is what does the work of forcing that displacement. So any type of forced displacement is what we consider a sweep. So, and that ranges from verbal harassment to move all the way to physical force to make them.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, I'll make my final comment. It's humane and it's counterproductive to the rest. It's inhumane and counterproductive to the rest of the plans you're trying to build. And if you're truly interested in building up thriving communities, you'll stop sweeping people.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate that. So as we get started with the council, I just want to remind all of my colleagues here, it's 4:35 now. We have a 5 o'clock council meeting, which will be fairly long as we're looking at the general plan and we're looking at matters pertaining to Capitol security. So with that, I want to start with Mr. Harris and Ms. Valenzuela, then Ms. Vang, and then Ms. Ashby.
Thank you, Jay. I appreciate your admonition. I'll keep it short. I want to thank S H R A for tremendous work. You know, we've got a lot going on. There are over 500 shelter beds in the River District alone, another 68 in D3. The Mercy Housing Building at Seventh and H in D4 is a tremendous effort. We do this work. People don't understand that we have made strides. It takes a long time to get each project out of the ground, but we're making progress. This is enough. Frankly, it's never quite enough to get on top of indigence and drug abuse and mental health issues. All the things that drive people to the street is very difficult. But it is important for our constituents to understand that we engage in this work very substantially, and we have great staff who do this work day after day after day. I commend S H R A, Daniel Foster, Bridget Dean, and I want to call out Volunteers of America, who have been our partners on many of these projects and done incredible work over the years. You know, we will keep soldiering forward, will rely heavily on staff, we will make great inroads. But can we get on top of it? Perhaps. We will certainly keep trying. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. I'll also be brief. Thank you for this, and hopefully a lot of lessons learned as we try to scale through the master plan process. I want to ask about exiting people out of shelters because I know sometimes, like, I'm just curious about what that part of the pipeline looks like from your all's experience since you're doing that work of trying to move people into temporary shelter and out into permanent housing. Like, can you give us like some sort of perspective from your perspective on, sorry, perspective on perspective? Can you give us your perspective on like what the status is of the units on the end of that for folks with mental illness, for folks who want substance abuse treatment, for folks who just need a subsidized unit? Just some idea of scale of what you're seeing in terms of need?
Sarah, do you want to take that?
Sure. In terms of, you know, as mentioned, I think what we are seeing is that with all the individuals that are going into the temporary shelters, you know, in terms of whether it's Meadowview or Emergency Bridge Housing, the key is having a lot of wraparound services like those that we mentioned because those are critical in order to get them stabilized. Because it's not a one-size-fits-all. It really depends on the individual. One person might just need a lot more mental health assistance, whereas another needs more in terms of, you know, in terms of organization and more peer counseling. So it's individualized in terms of the case management that's needed. And so with those wraparound services, it takes time. And it's not, and sometimes they'll might take two steps forward and then three steps back, and then you've got to continue on. But again, working with some of these partners that we have, and that's what's critical, right? There is the operator, but they have their own partners as well. So it really is a village that's working with the individuals. Then we're able to make progress. And as part of the budget, it's also really important to have those funds set aside for those initial first month, last month rent and everything else. Because once they're stabilized, they still need help. They still need help with not just services, but also those housing dollars and helping them find a unit. So we're very proud when we're talking about the Capitol Park 140-plus individuals that we were able to find housing for. And even from the Emergency Bridge Housing and Meadowview, even though we've been operating it for such a short period of time, the operators via way and first-step communities, they have the skill set to stabilize and to house them. So it's really not a one-size-fits-all.
Well, no, and just to be clear, I'm not questioning the skill set or the approach at all. I'm just looking at supply. Are there enough units out there for First Step or VOA or whomever? Once someone's ready to transition into permanent housing, is there no gap? Because that would be great news if that's what you're telling me, that there's no issue with finding permanent housing for folks. But I imagine there's some gaps, so I'm just trying to get an idea of what you're seeing from that end.
One thing that we learned at Railroad where we did not have individuals specifically paid to find housing for people. I know that we've made that change along the way for, I think, Meadowview and WX. I don't know about all of the others, but there are individuals or firms that basically their existence is finding housing so that we can move people into the housing. So that, I think, has helped quite a bit.
Absolutely. Councilmember Chenier, or Vice Mayor Chenier. Yes, we definitely, that was one of the lessons learned. So each time, the next time when we build a budget, we include those types of things. We include the money for the rehousing, which could be up to six months of assistance. But at the end of the day, yes, there is a gap in terms of the number of units that are available to put people into. And so I just don't want to leave the impression that that's not the problem. That's a part of the problem, as well as finding something that's affordable and that they can sustain.
Good. Okay, let's go to Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Councilmember Chenier. I will also keep my comments short. I just wanted to take this moment to thank S H R A, LaShelle, Sarah, thank you so much for your presentation, Danielle, just for your work in the city of Sacramento. And then I also just want to give a shout out to Councilwoman Angelie Gashby for actually bringing the Five Point Plan to council. I think it's clear, I think all of us know, right? When we say all hands on deck, that also means making sure that we address the multifaceted challenges of our unhoused folks. And, you know, I just want to give a shout out because three of the projects that you mentioned are in the district. You know, the Meadowview Navigation Center run by VOA, they're doing a great job there. The Permanent Housing Project, La Mancha and Coral Gables. Just want to just give a shout out to staff for their hard work on that, and that we are tackling this in District Eight from a multifaceted approach. The only question I have for the staff is around timeline on these projects because I think that's important for us to, on the council, to just keep in the back of our head, right? Timeline on projects. When will the budget be done? Because I know some of these projects are grant-funded, and I'm kind of just thinking long-term, what are we going to do next? I know right now we're just go-go-go. We get the grant funding and we're setting up shop, but just wanted to know. And I know, Sarah, in your presentation, you talked a little bit about, you know, time that has been set up. But I think it's also, and I don't know how often this comes back to council, if it's every six months, given that we also have a citywide comprehensive plan, and I'm assuming this is part of the plan as well. But for us to just, you know, keep, like, keep monitoring that because I think that's also really important. It's the budget piece, and what are we going to do moving forward when the funds run out, depending if it's grant-funded, right? And so, yeah, my question is just around that. Like, what is our strategy around, you know, supporting this like a year or two years from now when the grant is done? And the other piece is, the other question I had, well, let's start with that question first.
I'll go ahead related to the shelters. So the shelters are all grant-funded, as mentioned. We receive state funding, and the funding is for a two-year period. So that is the timeframe for the grant funding, and we will be coming forward to provide updates to you on a regular basis. And I think that would be up for council discussion in terms of, you know, what to do next in terms of next steps.
Okay, no, that's great. And how often do these come to council? Is it every six months?
Yeah, I don't think there's been anything structured in that way. But I would say it's far more often than every six months.
Okay, okay, thanks.
We also provide the weekly updates and the monthly updates on all the shelters as well.
Okay.
And those are on our website at www.shr.org.
Awesome. Thanks, I think that's it. If I have any additional question, we'll make sure to reach out. But just wanted to thank all of you for all your hard work on this, so thanks.
Okay, Pro Tem Ashby.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chenier. And thank you, Councilmember Vang, for lifting up my work on the Five Point Plan. I played the role of coordinator because these are everyone else's ideas on the City Council. Councilmember Harrison, Councilmember Jennings, and Councilmember Chenier, and Mayor Steinberg. All of their ideas are in the Five Point Plan, and all of the hard work to put it together and figure out how much it would cost and to get us this far has been led by the ladies who made the presentation there, Sarah and Danielle and LaShelle Dozier, of course, our fearless leader on all of these things. I'm just really proud of this presentation. I know it's not enough. I think we all know it's not enough. But I also want people to know that there is work happening, and I have a couple of questions. LaShelle, I think you're probably the right person, but might be Howard, you guys can help me. How much money have we spent so far or obligated on these projects? You know, the ones in the Five Point Plan Meadowview, the progress on WX Grove, Capital Hotel LGBTQ site, the South SAC Hotel bathrooms, all of that. Do you have a number on how much we've spent over the last year or so on those projects? Anyone?
That would be a pretty significant amount. I mean, if you look at just the Capitol Park, that must have been at least $8 million on that. Around five, between $5 to $6 million on Meadowview, as well as what we're seeing on the Navigation Center for the WX. So I guess a ballpark estimate, you know.
And Grove, LaShelle, how much was Grove?
Grove was the similar, similar amount, around $5 to $6 million on that as well. So that's just on the shelter side. That does not include all of the permanent supportive housing, which is a very big number because there are so many different funding sources.
$20 million just on Meadowview Grove, Capital Hotel. That doesn't even include the work you've done on WX LGBTQ, the South SAC Hotel, and the scatter sites you already have in place and the bathroom.
Correct.
And then, how much was, Howard, how much was Railroad?
I don't remember the final amount. Danielle, do you have a number that we ended up with, once we factored in the VOA contract?
I don't have the Railroad number. I don't know if Councilmember Harris knows it. But I was going to say, on the August 18th meeting date, we put $40 million into these projects from CARES and other grant sources. That includes the rental assistance, but it was about $40 million outside of the home key funds.
Right, and that was on top of Railroad. And, yeah, and then there's Room Key on top of that, which was included in that one, but on top of these things. And then there's also the projects that we've done, so which weren't included today. But we did two rounds of $1 million of funding for women and children shelters that went to St. John's and City of Refuge, but after they were selected through an RFP process. So all of those things have happened in the last 12 to 18 months. And I'm really glad that we're still moving forward, still pressing. But it brings me full circle back to Councilmember Valenzuela and Councilmember Vang's earlier question, which is, what resources do we have long-term for sustaining these projects? And which ones can we sustain the longest and provide the most services for? And as we move forward as a body, trying to decide how to prioritize the use of those precious funds and resources, I want to, A, celebrate our victories because the city deserves to know how hard the council and the staff and S H R A are working and that there is progress being made, even if you can't see it or feel it every day. But also, I want to make sure we're having realistic conversations around resources and funding, and this council needs to always be fully aware of the fact that when we decide to buy 30 units for this, what else we're not doing? For example, LaShelle knows she's so tired of hearing me ask her this, but how much money, LaShelle, do we need to initiate scatter site in my district, which I'm ready to do now, but requires funding for you to start master lease agreements? Sarah or LaShelle, how much money would we need to allocate to do that?
I think the amount that we had estimated was similar to the startup for like a Grove or anything else. So it was somewhere in that range between $4 to $5 million, depending on the number of families that we wanted to serve.
Right, so we have, every time we do this, even if we're not choosing, we are choosing because, you know, there are resources, there's only so many resources. So I'm, right, there is nothing left to do for the scatter site besides give S H R A funding and then ask them to go enter into the master leases, which they've already started to discuss with the apartment complexes in my district and other landlords. So I just, I just want to put that out there because today is not really like a motion, but, you know, we have to spend the money to make those things happen. I'm really proud of this effort, and I'm really proud of how much money our mayor has brought in. And if you can't see that, like, you're just not paying attention. We've spent tens of millions of dollars that other cities haven't even been able to identify. So we're quite fortunate, and we do need to celebrate those victories, but we also need to spend those precious dollars wisely. So I think it's good work. And LaShelle, I think you know this, but I, I just don't think anything that we try or approach without you works. It has to involve you and your team of 200 staff that are experts on housing. And every issue that we're touching here, you have staff that are experts on. And so I really appreciate you, Sarah, and your team's leadership to continue to help us make progress. So thank you for that, all of it.
The only thing I wanted to. Sorry, LaShelle. The updated number on Railroad is $6.6 million.
One more time, Howard, because you cut out a little bit. One more time.
$6.6 million is the number we spent on Railroad.
Okay, try one more time.
I'm sorry, my connection, I got kicked out too. For Railroad, we had, I think, $6.6 million.
$6.6 million. Okay, thanks for getting that number, Howard. What were you going to say, LaShelle?
Well, I was just going to mention that one of the things, to your point in the presentation, if you look at any of the ones that we were able to finance, like for permanent supportive housing, Lavender, Sunrise, Coral Gables, those are sustainable for 55 years. So we actually have culminated all the resources for long-term sustainability. The federal government doesn't necessarily give us the same type of funding that we've had to cobble together to do all of the other types of sheltering. We've been very fortunate with CARES money. The mayor has been, done a great job of bringing in private money, but we don't have that same type of long-term sustainability that we do have for permanent housing.
Thank you. That's it for me, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Gera, you want to bring us home on this item?
Yeah, in fact, I'll start off with what LaShelle just mentioned here. I had questions for my constituents about what was occurring in the city and what was occurring in District Six. And so I'll just first thank LaShelle and all of the S H R A staff and our city staff for their tremendous work on this. And to the point of permanent supportive housing and including the one in the county, that is. that is long-term sustainable housing. We've got two additional potential housing options that Councilmember Chenere and I are working on with Mercy Housing to have more family housing, including extremely low-income housing. And then mutual housing is looking at additional site at the San Juan Motel on that. We worked on some state legislation to get access, to speed up that land there. And that's going to be more resources along the Stockton Boulevard corridor. But along with that, these, many have asked about the scattered site model. And Sacramento Self- Help Housing is doing scattered site in District 6, but they have a contract also throughout the county. But it's important for folks to know that we're looking at also that model, that is also a sustainable model as well. Along as with, for many folks who may not be familiar, but the Boulevard Courts, which is the, the conversion of an old motel on Stockton Boulevard into permanent supportive housing. Again, and, and then finally, I want to just thank again the creativity of both St. John's and Weave and Danielle for working really in a time crunch, in a matter of like days, to look at this manufactured housing model option for both of their projects here. And for those that aren't familiar with manufactured housing, they're not only, there are homes that are, that are like yours and I, bedroom, bathroom, living space, kitchen. And, and again, some dignified living here with also longevity of 55 years plus in there. So just a big round of thank yous to the, all of the SHRA and city staff for pushing on all of those factors. Again, it's, we're looking at every aspect of it, whether it's scattered site, manufactured housing, permanent supportive housing. But there's still more work to do. But for those in District 6 who asked, what, what are the things that we're doing? That's just a primer of the, of the activities that, that are happening there. With that, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and we'll, we'll give everybody at least four minutes till the next council meeting.
Great, thank you. We have a couple of things left here, but LaShelle and Danielle and Sarah, thank you very much. This is a receive and file item, so we have received and we have now filed. Appreciate it. All right, Madam Clerk, you have a couple of announcements to make. And I believe we have one person who is calling in on matters not on the agenda. Let's do that first, then yours, and then we have an adjourned memory.
Thank you, that's correct. I have board and commission appointments to read into the record to the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission, Mario Guero, and to the Sacramento Arts, Culture and Creative Economy Commission, Azella Perez with District 6. I believe I have three callers on the line. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, everyone. It's Rose. I tried to call in earlier, but the system kicked me out. So I apologize to go backwards a little bit before we go on to the next topic. So I just wanted to know who made the decision to sweep away the camp on Alhambra on January 7th, three days after the city council vowed to make a plan to assist the unhoused. People are being moved from their safe places. They're being swept away by force and by fear, by a wave of police and dump trucks and fences. And I'm seeing, I've seen it with my own eyes. So whoever said that it's not happening, it's happening. I've seen it. And whatever you want to call it, it's called people being displaced. I watched the claw, the claw that we love that comes and gets our trash in front of our houses. The claw took those people's possessions and put them in a dumpster on wheels headed for the dump. And less than an hour after that, it started raining. So this is the cycle. Community members donate items, tents, blankets, sleeping bags. And then the city comes in, displaces the residents, and all of those donated items get thrown away and sent to the dump, which seems like not very efficient. I also want to highlight that for Latin Brown communities, are disproportionately represented in the homeless population. So I remind you that this is also a racial justice issue. A couple of questions I have. I want to know how much was spent displacing people from Stockton Boulevard in Alhambra? How much we are spending on dumping their personal possessions? How much we are spending on fencing around these lots? And how does that, how do all of those costs, plus I'm sure there are many more costs, how does that compare to actually providing services and safely house these people? We developed solutions and find funds to save the bat population that lives under our freeways, yet we do not offer the same to our unhoused human neighbors. And since the city hasn't stepped up, the community has. I really want to highlight Saksuit Mental Health Center, the Sacramento Poor People's Campaign, the Sacramento Homeless.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Over the past year, they have stepped up and they've been providing these services for free. They are all volunteers. So I know there's a question about money and resources, but, but the community is doing these things.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, yes, my name is Lambert of To The Bay and Back Cheesecakes. And I studied the diversity report last week with all of the graphs. And as a college student who graduated before social media, I know how to interpret graphs and statistics. Let me give you some statistics. I, I hope the mayor and the new city council members and definitely the city managers listening to this. This was November 12th in the Sacramento News. It said last year, 379 of the city's 663 managers were white. It said Asians were 96 managers, so they're second. 76 were Hispanics, and as always, blacks are at the end. It also talked about an exodus of black managers that are leaving the, the city. There's a tremendous problem there. Our company submitted a proposal in January of last year. And we did it when we attended a meeting at the Urban League. After we submitted it, then they said Measure U monies was affected by COVID. Okay, then there was $89 million in the coffer. We should have been funded. It's very difficult to submit a proposal. It's not an easy task. But I was up to the task because I'm telling the truth. So I hope people sincerely take a look at this, because this is becoming very cruel to my family. We have people that are ready to go. We were just, our case went viral during the 2020 holidays. And we have a manufacturer in Southern California. We have one in Northern California. So there's a tremendous problem here of talking about inclusive diversity economics.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, you need to fund our submitted proposal.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? And this is our final caller this afternoon. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm Robin, and I am a current tiny home dweller in the city of Sacramento. I bought a parcel in the city of West Sacramento to move my tiny home on. And I found out that it was going to be over $50,000 in permits and fees and engineers and the zoning, changing zoning, and all of this, leading to no affordable housing. So I'm trying to assist the city of West Sacramento in implementing tiny home policy to prevent this and to prevent homelessness, you know, from people becoming homeless. And I wish the city of Sacramento would try to implement these same things. Also, the rhetoric that I hear from homeless advocates is the lack of transparency on where funding is actually going. And I'd really like to see a committee or something created to prevent this rhetoric and to create more transparency on how these things are being funded, low-income housing, how homelessness shelters are being funded, and where the money is actually going. We need more itemization and transparency of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Anything from the city manager?
He didn't respond.
No, sir.
Okay, and any other comments by my colleagues? Okay, seeing none. You know, last week, we adjourned in memory of Max Fernandez, who was a city employee for many, many, many years. Wonderful man. This, this council meeting, we're going to adjourn in memory of Yvonne Redlinger. And Yvonne spent many years working for the Department of Parks and then Department of Parks, Youth Parks and Community Enrichment. She had pretty recently retired. And so we've asked Chris Wimberly, who was her coworker, to say a few words about this. Chris? You have to unmute yourself. Thank you.
I can't hear you, Kim.
Sorry.
There you go.
Sorry about that.
You're good.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to take a few moments to toast Yvonne Redlinger and the commitment that she made to the city of Sacramento with more than 43 years of service within Neighborhood Services, within the Parks and Recreation Department, and the various initiatives that the city has moved forward. She valued and believed in our communities, and if you ever were a part of anything she was involved in, you knew she had a love for Mickey Mouse. So tonight, I am here to toast Yvonne Redlinger and in her memory, making sure that she is honored for the work that she has committed to the city. So hear, hear, Yvonne.
Cheers.
Chris, thank you so much. We know she always had a smile on her face and was completely devoted to her job and to the city and to the work that she did. So we will adjourn this portion of the meeting in Yvonne's memory. Our condolences to her family. It's a huge loss. So with that, colleagues, we need about 15 minutes to flip the chambers over. It's 5:05, so how about 5:20? We'll come back and start the, the rest of today's marathon. We're adjourned.